And welcome, one and all, welcome to Brooklyn College. Welcome to the first tongue hall meeting of the new administration here in New York. My name is Junior George and today, as always, I'm joined by my good friend.
Yeah, Doc Sanders, of course, we're here at Brooklyn College, my friends. The NBC New York chapter, of course, bringing to you one of the first big tongue hall meetings right here at Brooklyn College. The theme, working together with Grenadians home and abroad to move Grenada forward, of course, what a beautiful theme. As we try to bring all the highlights to you of what's going on here today, a lot is gonna be happening in the background, but we're gonna bring it to you as we try to focus on building Grenada home and abroad.
And today, the format of the press conference, of the tongue hall meeting is, of course, the Prime Minister is gonna speak, have a speech, he's also gonna be joined by other members on the panel, and then we will take questions from the panel. We'll try our best as possible as well, because we know that there are a lot of people on the live that also wants to, you know, send out their questions, so we're gonna try as best as possible to facilitate some questions.
Of course.
From our chatroom. And before we start, before we say anything else, guys, we wanna apologize for the brief delay in the program, we are seventeen minutes late, we did promise that we'll be live at four o'clock, but there is, in fact, a delay right here, there is a delay right here at Brooklyn College and of the event in Brooklyn College, hence the reason why we were a little bit tardy. Nevertheless, the event has not started as yet, in fact, the podium is set, I mean, the stage is set, everything is set and ready, however, the event is still not, the event still hasn't kicked off in any kind of way, so you haven't missed anything thus far.
Well, we don't wanna call it a usual event, something that always happened, we are a little late, but seventeen minutes gone, eighteen minutes, and we are here with you, and as always, we're gonna bring the opening remarks, the, you know, see some of the people that are coming in, we might have a little chat here with them before everything starts.
Absolutely.
And, you know, they're gonna pass our way, yeah, our way is a little close to the entrance, so somebody have to pass by.
Yeah.
We're gonna see if we could squeeze them in somehow.
Well, of course, of course, of course.
And we're gonna have a full packed program for you today, it'll finish about eight o'clock, as we have it on schedule here, from four to eight, yes, foregone, so we're good. We have opening remarks, you know, prayer, we're gonna have remarks from Jomani Williams, yep, that's the New York City Public Advocate, we're gonna have remarks from the Honorable David Andrew, remarks from Honorable Joseph Andal, Andrew, address from the Prime Minister and others, we're gonna have other questions and answers, we have a section of Q and A, we're gonna have the question and answer section coming up for you, so we have a packed program from four to eight, and it's gonna be really great.
Absolutely.
So stay with us, we're gonna bring it for you, remember, it's not a party, it's not a, it's something that is grand, something that some people really look forward to having from a very long time.
Yeah.
We should have had it before the election.
In fact, yes, I was just about to say that.
Yep.
This was called to take place way before, a little bit before the election, but because the election came up and there were a conflict in the schedule.
Yeah.
That the Prime Minister and the delegation decided to do this event virtually.
Well, I think after the election was called, the date for the election was set, it's like everything else had to just, you know, move away from schedule, so now we have it, and what a great time to have it too.
Yeah.
Yeah, even better.
Yesterday, Doc, I don't know, I didn't see you at the ball, but let me just tell you, you missed an amazing event.
Yes, I heard so too.
An absolute amazing event.
Yeah, yeah, I heard so.
I mean, listen, you know what I enjoyed about the event yesterday, right, is that Grenadians from all over the diaspora.
Yeah.
Not only folks here from New York only, we had people that came in from Canada.
Yes.
Folks who came in from.
And they're still here.
And they're still here, right?
Today, yes, they're not missing that.
Specifically to be a part of this event yesterday.
They're not missing that at all. I was somewhere else yesterday evening, and I was scheduled to be at the pub today with Casey and friends.
Yeah.
Down at Sea View, but of course, I can't miss that, I had to say, guys, I'll see you all another time.
Yeah, we appreciate that, we appreciate that.
So it's gonna be a grand event, the NBC New York chapter holding something very, very big here today, the tongue hall meeting, and my friends, the amount of people I heard say they're gonna be here, they're not missing that, well, it's gonna be a grand time, and we're gonna bring the stage to you, we're gonna bring all the action via the stage, we are still, we are working on that, everything is set, as soon as something happens via stateside, we're gonna take you right there, you are seeing picture of the stage and everything else, the nice setting there, the flowers and the setting of the table, matching the, you know, the theme we have today, we bringing Grenada forward, you know?
Yeah.
At home and abroad, joining forces, and we're gonna do that today for you, the theme says, working with Grenadians home and abroad in moving Grenada forward, you know, to move Grenada forward.
Absolutely.
And it's happening right here at the Brooklyn College, Brooklyn, New York.
And let me take this opportunity also to invite the people that are here, that's here in New York, you still have time, in fact, if you are wandering around and you're looking for a place to come to, make your way down to Brooklyn College right now, one caveat to.
Yes.
You have to walk with your vaccination card, whether on your phone device or physically, but you need to have your vaccination card.
Yes.
Available to show, because you could only enter these premises, and that's a Brooklyn College caveat.
Come with your ID with it too sometimes, they need to match it a little.
Right.
Just to say it's you, not your sister's or not your brother's, not Junior on your wall, so just have something to show it's you, you know, that's your card and that's you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just walk with it, please, and if you don't have it, you could walk with the last recent test that you took, the negative test.
Negative COVID-19 test.
Yes, yes, if you have a negative test, you still come through today.
Absolutely.
I know you might be staying away because of that, you might be saying, yeah, well, I don't have my card, I didn't take it, but I have a test result that I just did even yesterday.
Yeah.
The most recent one, please, just walk with it, yes.
Bring it in, and again, that's a Brooklyn College.
Requirement, yes, 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 yes. It's not, nothing from the party, not, no, no, no. Don't put it on the party today.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's something that is required by the college, that you must be vaccinated or show proof of a negative test to enter the college.
Yes, let's take this time to welcome and big up to the folks that's locked on around the world, Doc, they are coming in, and they are coming in in their numbers, we'd like to welcome everyone that's watching, let's do a quick roll call, guys, I wanna see the folks watching in Grenada, the folks are watching in Grenada.
Show some flags or something?
Show us some flags, let's see, let's big you up.
That would be nice, and you know they're bold, they're gonna do that, of course.
Yes, we wanna see the folks from Grenada.
Yes.
If you are in Grenada, if you're Grenadian representing Canada, I want you to put your Grenada and your Canada flag.
Yes, oh, the flags are coming, Junior.
The flags are coming, Grenada, Grenada, if you are in the UK.
Yeah.
If you are in the United Kingdom, I want you to put the Grenada and the UK flag.
Thank you, Grenada, and what you could do, anytime you make a comment or say anything, just put your flag by it, so it makes life easy for us.
Yes, big up, it's a tropical rebel, big up yourself, Denison Chaitanu, Chitram, sorry, watching from England, big up yourself, greeting from Grenada, Toronto in the building.
Yeah.
Big up, big up, and there are also people in Jamaica, we have some Jamaican friends, we have some friends from St. Vincent and the Grenadines, we wanna say big up to you as well, there are some folks watching us as far as Dubai.
Dubai, imagine that.
Yeah, the folks from Dubai, Pamela, big up yourself.
Yeah, once you make a comment, just put the flag, so we know where you're heading from, so if it's from China, we know.
Hey, somebody say that they're here in Brooklyn College.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're here in Brooklyn College and they're checking us out, so this is, this is the crowd right now, we're just starting to build up, Doc, as you said, it's early time still.
It's early time, it's early time for Grenadians.
Early time for Grenadians still, they're still coming.
Typical, typical, that's us, that's how we are, yeah, we don't mind that, we like to just step in when things start, not before it starts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we like that.
We coming in, we coming, we, you see, we fashionably, we fashionably lead.
Yes. No, you know, the typical thing with us is that we don't like coming and sit and wait, you know, that get us a little frustrated sometimes.
Right.
We walk in when something is going ahead, you know, sometimes food is cooking and some people only walking when the food is sharing, you know?
When the food is sharing.
Yeah, they never out there to help, you know, that's how we rule, so, you know, we entertain you here, we are not comedians, but sometimes we try to be, we make sure we could give you a smile.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't matter what event, we'll still bring a smile to your face.
Richard, hey, Nichols, how you doing, big up yourself, big up yourself, Nichols, we're doing well, thank you so much, Agatha Jordan, how you share up with all your friends, share with all your friends, Doc, yesterday, as I was telling you, I was at the ball.
Yeah.
And I saw so many people.
That you haven't seen in a long time.
That I've seen in a long, long time, right? And I, man, listen, it was a big reunion yesterday, massive reunion.
Might be even bigger today.
Yes, yeah, we expect that.
They don't have to pay today, you know?
Yeah.
Cousins coming today, auntie and uncle.
Yeah, everybody, everybody coming in.
It's free today, you know?
Hey, Hamilin Bernard, big up yourself, Doc and Junior, blessing to you both. Big up yourself and everyone else. Trench Tongue in Grenville, the folks in Grenville.
Yeah.
Big up all yourself.
Yes.
And we like to also say, guys, we're doing this in collaboration with John Crowe, who is assisting us with some of the camera angles, so you're gonna see multiple camera angles today, John Crowe is here, and he will be assisting us with some of the angles, and Lacy saying, Lord Junior, you can talk with.
Oh, my goodness.
So you'll see, you think those start, you think those start yet to know?
Somebody hit me up, I think about last week, somebody hit me, I love to watch you viewing, but you and Junior, man, you and Junior could talk so much, man.
But nothing is happening, nothing is happening on stage, all of this, there is nothing happening on stage.
I have to say hi to my sister too, she say, boy, you and Junior, I don't know which one is better, I say, girl, we just good, we try to compete every day.
Yeah, guys, so nothing is happening on stage, so we have to talk.
Yeah, it's not like we can bring you anything.
Yeah.
I mean, look at what we're bringing you right now, just the crowd so far building.
Nothing start yet.
Nothing start yet.
And we promise you guys, once the event start, we won't be talking, all right? We go hush remote.
It's just our nature, sometimes we like to talk, we say that we don't, we won't be talking, but we would be talking.
Hey, hey, guys, we live coming to you, this is from Brooklyn College, this is the auditorium here at Brooklyn College, and we are covering this live event.
Yeah.
It's a tongue hall meeting for the, for the NBC, the Prime Minister is in town, and he's specifically here for the UN General Assembly.
Mm-hmm.
The Foreign Affairs Minister, Honorable David Andal, Joseph Andal, sorry, is also here.
Yeah.
He spoke yesterday, and, and let me tell you, the people were so happy to see David.
Mm-hmm.
It's like, it's like, it's like it was a star-studded lineup yesterday, the people was chanting and cheering and dancing, happy to see the contingent that was here last night, but it didn't get an opportunity to ask questions.
Right.
Today, however, they will get an opportunity to ask questions.
That's the Q and A today, yes, that's the Q and A, that's the Q and A. My, one good friend of mine from England said, what happened, you and Junior didn't do your makeup today, you're sweating already, don't worry, we'll get our artist, our makeup artist to come forward in a sec.
Yeah, yeah.
As soon as things start, don't worry, we set you know?
Fix us up, fix us up.
Yes, fix us up, man, come nice.
Nice us up.
It was a little touchy and there, man.
Yeah, Honorable Joseph Andal, yeah, he was here yesterday, and he spoke, represented well, the people really accepted the contingent, we had the Minister of Education who was also here yesterday, let me tell you something, man, star-studded team here.
Yes.
A star-studded lineup here, and we expect that to be transformed on stage here as well, the only difference is that you get an opportunity to ask questions, yesterday was more for frolic.
Yep.
You know, I mean, we had fun, we eat, we drink, a whole lot of food, Doc, by the way.
A lot of food, right?
Let me tell you, we had so much food yesterday.
You know I miss that, for real.
Yeah, it was fun.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Lots of fun, lots of fun.
So as we say, my friends, we have a packed event here for you, earlier on, we're gonna have call to order, we're gonna have the national anthem and so forth for you, we're gonna have remarks coming up, we're gonna have some remarks from about, checking about four thirty, but it's gone already, that's around now, we should have that, we're gonna have remarks from the New York City Public Advocate, Jomani Williams, we're gonna have some remarks from Senator Honorable David Andrew, we're gonna have remarks from Honorable Joseph Andal coming up for you soon, then we're gonna have remarks from the Prime Minister, Prime Minister, the Honorable Dickon Mitchell, we're gonna have a Q and A session, of course, that's supposed to be around seven o'clock, we're gonna have that for you, and then we have the vote of hands, so we have a packed event here, and it's gonna start sometime very soon, you know? Tomorrow is a working day, and we try to, we try to put it early so you could have some time for yourself to organize, to get home early and deal with the kids, deal with whatever you have to plan for work tomorrow.
Yeah.
So I don't think we'll go more than, I mean, we might start late, but we would not pass ten.
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not, hopefully not, we may not pass ten, but, you know, it was scheduled for four to, four to eight.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we start late, we might go about nine, let's see what happen, yeah, but it's a packed event, yes.
Again, guys, again, guys, we are here at Brooklyn College, let me just remind everyone that the event has not started as yet.
As yet.
Nothing is happening on stage as yet, we're feeling the void of nothing happening just to let you know that nothing is happening.
I'm just looking at the flower we have via the stage here for you.
Nice, let's just look at the flower.
And look at the flower, let's look at that flower, some nice red roses in there.
Yes.
Hmm, I'm loving it, I mean, we can bring a view like that for you too, yeah, you know, whatever the event you're having and you want your flowers look like that, maybe a wedding, and you need for us to be there to do the honors and getting you, you know, your wedding ceremony, pictures, whatever event, birthday party, sweet sixteen, a funeral, whatever it is.
Whatever it is.
Yeah, you need camera, you need lights, you need action, we are there.
That's what it's all about.
Yes.
Guys, again, we're broadcasting live from the tongue hall meeting here in New York City, we are awaiting the delegation to come on, come to the auditorium here, and as soon as they do that, we'll get an opportunity to speak to them, we'll also get an opportunity to talk to some of the patrons here at the Brooklyn College.
Yeah.
As we showed you earlier, people are just starting to come in, people just start to trickle in, the major crowd is still outside, because there's a processing, there's a period of processing where they have to verify your COVID-19 vaccination, and only the people that has, that had that card.
Yes.
Will be allowed in the building again.
So if you're home and you're trying to organize to get here.
Bring it.
Don't leave it, please, or walk with your vaccination, not your vaccination, but walk with your last result from testing, you know you're negative, so come with it, please, just show proof.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. Again, guys, let me take this opportunity to welcome everyone who just came in, I would say thank you so much, you are here early, and we appreciate that, so what you could do at this point is share, share the program on our page, because we were just told in our air that the event is scheduled to start shortly.
Shortly.
In a matter of minutes, the event should start.
Yeah.
And it's straight, going on straight from there, we are also expecting that they will provide us with some kind of microphone at this podium here, so some of the questions, we could pose the questions to the panel.
That's right.
Hopefully, we could do that for you guys, so you can start thinking about some of the questions you wanna ask the delegation, I will try to get it on for you, we'll try to get your questions asked live right here, all right?
Right.
But this is an opportunity for you right now, guys, so share the program, invite a few friends, the event is scheduled to start in a matter of minutes, in a matter of minutes, the event is scheduled to start, once it start, it is straightforward from there, the Honorable Prime Minister, Dickon Mitchell, is in New York, but representing Grenada at the UN General Assembly later on this week.
That's right.
So a group of Grenadians here, actually, the chapter, the NBC chapter here in New York is, has put together this event, so Grenadian could interface, could meet, chat, ask questions to the Honorable, Honorable Prime Minister, and we saw people coming in with papers, you know, people have their questions, because people have some strong concerns about things, people are asking about.
They want to know the way forward.
The way forward, I mean, if you're talking about, if you're talking about transformation.
Yes.
What are some of the transformation, what are some of the, the benefits of the transformation for the folks in the diaspora?
Yes.
How would the folks in the diaspora likely to benefit from, from all of these transformations?
And as one person asked, some of the things mentioned before the election and campaigning, can we succeed with those things, can we really achieve them, you know, sometimes we say a lot of things, but can we merge them, can we, you know, live up to them? And people have that kind of question in going forward, of course, asking those kind of question, you know, it's gonna be a lot, some of the question, I guess, has been sent forward already, so you're probably the people that has to answer the question.
No, I doubt it, I doubt, I doubt that will be, that's the situation.
It will be just straightforward.
Yeah, yeah, the question has not been prepped, in fact.
Not been prepped.
The question has not been prepped.
Okay.
The questions will be asked directly.
From anybody that willing to ask a question.
For anyone who's willing to ask, in fact, there are people in the, in the, in the, in the audience right now, we see a video image of the, of the audience.
Looking good already.
And people came prepared with some of the questions, asked their question.
Of course, of course, okay.
All right?
Yes.
And I saw this lady came in, and she had, she had like a notebook, and her question is on this notebook, and she says she wanna ask the Prime Minister those questions, she's very concerned.
Does she have a few?
About a couple things, so she have a few questions.
Yes.
That she would like to ask.
And these are people that were preparing since before the election to ask that question in that special tongue hall meeting that we were supposed to have.
Yeah.
And they didn't get a chance, so finally, they're getting a chance today, so he's gonna be prepared for some of the questions that you have, the panel is gonna be prepared, there is not only the Prime Minister here, but we have also Senator David Andrew and others here, who will help answer some of those questions that you have.
Absolutely.
So if you have your question and you're thinking about making your way forward here, you really want to meet the Prime Minister, a lot of people wanna take photos with the Prime Minister, of course, you want that photo, I know, people came here just to get a photo with the young man today, with the Honorable Prime Minister today, they wanna get that photo, it's a special photo.
Yeah.
And people came here, prepared for that, they want to ask that question, they want to meet the Prime Minister, meet and greet, it's also a meet and greet time.
Yeah.
But you're gonna get your chance to do that, only if you make your way here, please.
Guys, again, if you are wandering around Brooklyn and you're watching us right now, the event just started, well, it even started yet, they are just getting ready to start, we just got in our ear that the event would officially start like in about five minutes or so.
Yeah.
So in about five minutes, you'll be able, the event, the emcee, there will be, I believe there will be two emcees today, and the event will get on the way, and, and so you're well in time, this, we're coming to you live from Brooklyn College, right? So if you are coming down right now, you get on North Strand.
Yeah.
You get in Flatbush Junction, North Strand, Brooklyn College, when you reach anywhere there, you just ask anyone, that's where they heading.
Look on the right side, it depends where you're coming from.
Yeah.
And you, but the train, the train stop right there, that final stop right there, look on the right side, you might see MCU Bank right there, and you just come through that alley right, and you're inside?
Yeah, and you're right here, you're right here, but make sure, guys, that you walk with your, with your vaccination.
Your last COVID test, there's negative one, please, leave the, leave the positive one home, walk with that negative test, come with, come with, I know sometimes you had about five, because one was positive, you get one that is negative, walk with that one, please.
Well, if you're happy, if you're happy about your positive COVID test and your whole attitude.
Just walk with that negative test, please, come here with it, feeling happy, and if you really just want to walk with your vaccination card, some people don't want to walk with it, you could also take a picture of it, yes, take a picture of it and put it in your phone and just come with that, and it's accepted at the door also, just have an ID to match with that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Again, guys, we are coming to you live, the event has not yet started, so we are here.
I know you say we like to talk about things and we like to chat, yes, you're not missing anything.
Yeah.
Come on, we won't let you miss anything, not at all.
I wanna, Doc, I wanna, I wanna talk about the diaspora community here, right, in New York, what are some of the most pressing issues, you think, that affect people here in the diaspora?
I think, I think some of the issues is people looking to see how they can, how they can highlight some of the things that are going on in the country itself, how they can, how they can contribute, people looking to see how they can contribute to whatever is happening in Grenada.
Yeah.
People always wonder, how can I be part of what's happening while I'm here?
Yeah.
I know people ask that question a lot, you know, sometimes people feel left out with a lot of events, and I think that's where events like this really bring you in.
Right.
And so you could feel part of what's going on.
All right, so they're calling right now for the start of the, of the event, they're asking everyone to take their seats, indication that the event would soon be started, onstage we have, the emcee today is Mr. Jerry Hopkins, he's one of the two emcees who would be gracing the stage here today.
Today, yes.
Today, and again, guys, we want you to start preparing your questions, because we are and we will be asking some of the questions to the panel, right? I also think, and I wanna use this opportunity, guys, to advise everyone that I believe it's time that we move past the partisanship, the partisan, the NNP, NBC, and think about nation building.
Country first.
Country first, election is over.
Yes.
It's time now to move forward as Grenada, Grenada, Caracu and Pitti Martinique, so the music has dimmed a bit, quite a bit, the emcee is onstage, and.
We could go stage side, let's get a little remark.
Yes, yes, Jerry Hopkins is onstage right now, let's go onstage.
To the head table, the guests of honor, but again, welcome to the people's tongue hall. First, may I invite to the head table Minister of Education, Youth, Sports and Culture, Honorable David Andrew, let's give him a warm Brooklyn round of applause. Secondly, I invite to the head table the Honorable Joseph Andal, Minister of Foreign Affairs, Trade, Export Development. Thirdly, we invite to the head table the Chairman of the NBC New York Chapter, Bernard Bourne. And finally, the man of the moment, a man whose name is synonymous with tongue halls, branded as such, the Honorable Prime Minister of Grenada, Honorable Dickon Mitchell. Folks, you may be seated, my name is Jerry Hopkins, and together with Ms. Janice Augustine, we'll be co-emceeing this evening's session, tongue hall session, the people's tongue hall, with the theme, working with Grenadians home and abroad to move Grenada forward, in other words, engaging the diaspora as we transform Grenada.
Miss, once again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Grenadians, are you here?
Yeah.
Is there anybody from Pitti Martinique in here? Is there anybody from Caracu?
Yeah.
St. John?
Yeah.
St. Mark?
Yeah.
St. Patrick?
Yeah.
St. Andrew? Somebody missing.
Yeah.
Did I, did I miss somebody?
Yeah.
In geography class?
Yeah.
Is there anybody from St. George here?
Yeah.
Watch them tongue people now? Watch them tongue people now? All right. Is there anybody from the Virgin Parish, St. David? Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. At this point, I'd like to invite Father Bain to lead the evening session with some In the absence of Father Bain, Mr. Nick Cox will lead us in prayer.
Yes, I'm not Father Bain. So bow your heads in prayer with me, you can stand if you wish. Heavenly Father, we thank you for safely gathering us here today as we celebrate with our delegation from Grenada, the Prime Minister-led delegation. We thank you for a wonderful weekend so far. We have had a successful and epic gala last night. We ask you to continue to cover the government, its ministers, the people of Caracu, Grenada, Pitti Martnik. We ask you to allow the delegation here tonight to present you with words that would inspire us to move Grenada forward. All this we ask in Jesus' name.
And folks, before we continue with the welcome remarks by Mr. Bernard Bourne, I would like to also invite to the head table, um, Advisor Orlando Romaine, who is also the NDC PRO. I would also like to invite the Prime Minister's Executive Assistant, Ms. Akira. And finally, Ms. Andrea Saint-Bernard, the Treasurer of the NDC. And folks, without any further ado, as this session, as this tongue hall is in session, I invite Mr. Bernard Bourne to give some warm Brooklyn, NDC, NY, welcome remarks. We're gonna have now, just ahead of the welcome remarks, the national anthems. So may you please stand.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous night? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that all flags were still there? Oh, say, does the star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home Hail, Grenada, land of us! We pledge ourselves to Thee as hearts and hands in unity to reach our destiny. Ever conscious of God, being proud of our heritage, may we with faith and courage aspire, build, advance as one people, one family.
Thank you very much, Natifa. At this point, we'd like to get into the official, official program with the speeches.
Again, guys, you're watching a live broadcast here of the tongue hall meeting. Invite everyone that's watching to take this opportunity to share the program, um, give everyone else an opportunity to watch, uh, this exciting event here live from the Brooklyn College Auditorium. Let's go back onstage.
Special welcome, Honorable Dickon Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada, Caracu and Pitti Martnik, or should I say, Caracu and Pitti Martnik and Grenada? I know, I don't want to steal his thunder, I want him to say to you. Honorable Joseph Andel, Minister of Foreign Affairs, Trade and Export Development. Honorable David Andrew, Minister of Education, Youth, Sports, Culture. Executive members of the NDC on the head table, our PRO, Orlando Romaine, and our Treasurer, Andrea Saint-Bernard, assist, uh, Special Assistant to the Prime Minister, Akira Lessie. Executive members of the National, of the NDC New York Chapter and members of the New York Chapter, and we have some members here as far away as Atlanta and Montreal, welcome. Sis, special invited guests, members of the press, sisters and brothers, ladies and gentlemen, friends and friends of Grenada. Let us join, I'm inviting you to join with me and give the visiting delegation and Prime Minister Dickon Mitchell a warm New York welcome. Special welcome to the delegation. The delegation had a major treat so far. Last night, we celebrated a special dance and, and ball in its honor, and I know they were thrilled, they were excited, and everybody who was present also was excited. We also had a special gathering with members of the party and the visiting delegation, and that was also a beautiful session, together with a special internet discussion with some notable Grenadians across the globe. I think that is gonna lead to something big for the government of Grenada and the people of Grenada in the near future. One year ago, or just about a little over a year ago, most people, most Grenadians who are familiar with our politics, our local politics, may have discounted the prospects of the NDC, especially after two conservative whitewashes. They thought that NDC was flat out knocked out and there was no more life in the NDC. In fact, some people even started to encourage NDC members to go the other way, find another home, go to another party. But there were co-members of the NDC in Grenada and in New York who said, no, we have to stand up and fight for our party because the core values of the NDC strike a chord with most ordinary people. Unity, vision, and benefits for all, not some, but all. When NDC rules, NDC rules for all Grenadians. But we had one problem one year ago, and that is, we did not have what it takes at the moment, at least so some of us thought. But through a process of discovery, NDC took the decision that, look, we have made mistakes in the way we go about finding leaders. It is not just shuffling a pack and picking any old card from that pack, especially if the pack of cards is old. You gotta get a brand new pack, and that's what we set out to do last year. And as we search, and as we search and we keep searching, somebody drew a card. And that card was the card NDC needed more than anything else. We wanted someone who the Grenadian people and the people from Caracu and Pitti Martnik could believe in and who they were willing, who they're willing to vote for. And we found that card in Honorable Prime Minister Dickon Mitchell. So today, so today, that was a card that we played, and that card is a trump card, Not, not the fake news trump card I'm talking about. So sisters and brothers, so sisters and brothers, today, today we want to introduce to you. Actually, actually, some of us describe him as the X factor, something is, is like a magical factor we didn't, we didn't have, but we searched for and we found it. All right? So today, we want to introduce to New York, on his first trip to New York, that shining star that we call the leader of the NDC and the Prime Minister of Grenada. Some people in the audience and some people home who are listening might still think they are dreaming because they didn't know NDC had what it takes to unseat what they thought was an incumbent that was the undefeatable. But with a few gentle strokes and a few magical words, we persuaded the Grenadian people. In fact, Prime Minister Dickon Mitchell persuaded the Grenadian people that we had what it takes to transform Grenada and move Grenada forward. So ladies and gentlemen, I do not want to take all of your time, so I would once again welcome the delegation, Honorable Prime Minister and his team to New York, and we are going to get a treat today. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, and to.
Again, Doc, if you, again, Doc, let me just butt in right here, uh, and, and remind everyone that you're watching a live broadcast of the tongue hall meeting here in New York by the, uh, NDC admin, the, well, the government of Grenada. Are they here for the, um, the UN General Assembly?
Yeah.
And this event was put together by the New York, NDC New York Chapter. Uh, Doc, the people really didn't like when, when, um, when he mentioned.
The trump card.
We'll talk about that, let's go back onstage.
Honorable Prime Minister, Dickon Mitchell, colleague Minister of Foreign Affairs, Honorable Joseph Andel, Chairman of the New York Chapter, Bernard Bourne, uh, other distinguished members of the NDC at the head table, Personal Assistant to the Prime Minister, Sister Akira. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, New York family, good evening. Right, you hearing me a little close, a little better?
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Right. It's really a pleasure to be able to speak with you this evening briefly, uh, in my capacity as Minister for Education and more so, uh, Member of the National Democratic Congress, Caretaker for St. Andrew's Southeast. This evening, I choose to just share with you probably a few brief achievements that we have been able to accomplish thus far within the almost three months that we've been in office, and share with you some projections and some opportunities for collaboration. And then I'll quickly take my seat and wait for the questions you may choose to, to ask. So I think one of the clear things that we've been able to do is to inspire the Grenadian people, and this inspiration has come across all sectors. I remember saying after we, after the election, after I voted, the media came and I said to them, whatever the result of the, of the elections, the fact that there was the rebirth of hope and inspiration and a, and a desire to dream and to want to do, the fact that that alone was achieved within the campaign was a victory, a moral victory for Grenada. Thankfully, we got much more, and we got more than just that, but today we have a real opportunity to build on that dream and to see young people, to see our nation, just like the energy we're seeing with you, to see all of that come together to help move Grenada forward. And so one of the key things, one of the achievements is already an increase in the morale of the staff at education. Prior to my arrival as Minister, there was a really broken morale of staff. Persons got headaches just at the time they got disembarked of the buses to come to work. Some persons got headache, walked up the steps to get to the ministry. And some of them would complain because my background is psychology, counseling, some of them complained that they found an easy air to listen, and it broke my heart. But I can tell you that since the twenty July of June, 2022, there has been a rebirth of desire. People want to come to work. People dressed to come to work. There's a lightness at the ministry. The morale of the staff has begun to improve and to grow, and we are quite happy about that. And the National Democratic Congress and this new government has engendered that. So that we are extremely happy about. Then allow me to say a couple of the achievements. We might take for granted the fact that within the last couple of weeks, all schools reopened. When we got in there just after the elections, uh, number of things happening all simultaneously and all quickly, and we. and all quickly, and we had to try to get, to not open schools or to not open any significant number of schools is a, a real bad miss. Parents are upset, they need their children back in school. The students themselves run the risk of getting involved in all sorts of mischief. And so we were determined to get them back. And if we had only listened to what some public opinion may have said, we probably would not have had some schools opened, but we got all schools opened despite the challenges. We got all schools opened. That's an achievement, yeah. And even as I say that, I want to put on record the profound degree of support that we got from principals, teachers, and community folk in seeing schools reopened. And it reminds me of the day when we had that kind of community spirit where community did a lot for community. The days when we didn't have to depend on a government contract to clean the sides of the roads. I remember those days, I was a little boy, but I understood the spirit of nationalism and pride that existed in those days. I was just a little boy between 79 and 83, but I think I understood that spirit and that national pride that existed, and I felt a bit of it as community people, truck men came to help with moving things in some schools where we had to make alternative arrangements. You had people with trucks coming to help, you had volunteer groups coming along to help, to power wash and to clean, to make sure that whatever repairs were taking place, that adequate cleaning and preparation could be done to have schools reopened. And we want to put on record our thanks to all of the persons involved, principals, teachers, community. And it shows the goodwill that we have awakened, and we want to capitalize on that and keep building as we go forward. Now, within the last couple of weeks, I have had the pleasure of meeting all principals, all the principals of primary and secondary schools, as well as the teachers in charge of pre-primary schools. And we've had very cordial and promising exchanges, and I could only look forward with great anticipation to the kind of collaboration that we are going to have. We cannot, in fact, the Prime Minister made it clear, and we concur, that we cannot continue to have the adversarial climate that existed before if we want to move education forward. We cannot continue to have people wanting to scamper or people always on edge when it comes to the Ministry of Education. We want to make sure our teachers, our principals, who are in fact our ambassadors, to get the work that we want done, done. We want to make sure that they feel supported by us at the Ministry of Education. We are quite aware, we are not naive, and we are quite aware that it won't be every time that we'll be on the same page. We know there are times when we would have to, we may have to see things differently. But as I committed to my principals, regardless to what position we have, we promise to treat them with dignity and with respect, even if we have differences of opinion. we've been able to have paid deduct salaries of teachers, I mean, and that was done quite early, very early. The Prime Minister got sworn in, the declaration was made. And some persons might trivialize that, but I think the cost of not paying it outweighs the literal cost of what it was. Because over the years, we've lost so many things because, we've lost a lot of revenue because we couldn't have sports, we couldn't have games, we couldn't have all of the extracurricular activities that's supposed to help shape and give students the avenues to help develop a rounded life and a rounded education. We lost a lot of that, and a lot of it was stemming out of unfairly docking the salaries. And so it cost us a lot. We lost intercall. We lost, and our intercall games are deemed to be second only to Jamaica's Mini Olympics, yes. And for those of us who've gone there, you just know what a rivalry. So sometimes I listen to people talk about the GBSS and the PBC and the, and the SASS and all of that. And, you know, sometimes when we, when we meet, you know, I meet a GBSS brother, by the way, I'm an old SASS alumnus. So I'm indeed delighted. But when I meet a GBSS old boy, we have to talk about the spirit of that rivalry because intercall was just not intercall without a SASS and a GBSS rivaling, you know? At least in the boys' division. I, I probably don't want to talk about the high school and the other, the girls' divisions at this time, but anyhow. But the point is, so much of that was lost, the debate competitions and all of the things that... So some students passed a whole four, five years in school and didn't get to experience any of those things. Of course, the COVID-19 pandemic compounded those things and made it a lot more, more But the repayment of the, of the docked salaries certainly sets that platform for the reintroduction of sports and games, and we've moved in that direction already. We've engaged the Ministry of Sports, we've engaged the unions, and we now look forward to the reintroduction of those games. So come October next month, we hope to have, in collaboration with the Ministry of, well, the Department of Sports, because it's Ministry of Education, Youth, Education, Youth, Sports and Culture, the Department of Sports, we hope to have the commencement of several of the games, football and the netball and some of the sporting activities that we had missed for a long time in our school system. And we look forward, that's, that's an achievement too. In addition to that, we have engaged the, the coaches in the sporting division to assist in coaching our primary school students so that they too can get more meaningfully involved in physical activity, sports and games. We have been concerned that the research had indicated over the last several years that there was increasing obesity among students. And so we are happy to collaborate with the Division of Sports to see our coaches deployed in our primary schools to assist with physical education, sports and coaching activities. Let me talk quickly about, I mean, most, many of you may have followed the saga with our premier tertiary level institution, the Theophilus, Theophilus Albert Mary Show Community College, TAMCC. And we are happy that we have moved past the impasse. Not everything is settled out yet, but we are happy that students are, school has started for many last week, and some are going to start this week, the registration went on. We've put in place the council led by our Dr. Wendy Grenade to take charge of the affairs of the council, of the college. We are happy to report too that there is a member of the diaspora on that council. Dr. Walter Simmons is, is that person. So when, I think somebody mentioned, we are looking for opportunities to engage and to utilize the skills of our diaspora as far as possible, and that's another example. So we thank you for being available and to share, and for sharing your expertise. So we know that there's a lot more work to do at TAMCC, but we are happy that we were able to bring some degree of resolve, albeit in the immediate, in the short term, to see the resumption of activity that existed for over 10 months prior. Then one of the things I'm happy to report to you is that we have enacted the policy position to make primary and secondary education charge free, oh, yeah? To remove the fees. And from the time the declaration was made, we have operationalized it, and so now it's passed, it's passed in the cabinet that fees, tuition fees will not be applied to students at primary, secondary. We are going to move to TAMCC eventually, but it's, we don't want to bite out more than we are able to chew at this point. So that's coming, but bit by bit. So not only have we removed the fees, but we have moved to increase subventions to schools to make sure that no school felt worse off or in a worse off position than before we made that or took that policy decision. And so by the end of this month, all schools will receive a fee prescribed per student, per term, in keeping with what was withdrawn from them. So no school will be left behind or left in a disenfranchised position, and we are happy about that achievement too. Included in that, I must say, is the fact that for the first time in the history of our preschools, our early childhood development centers, there is going to be a subvention to our preschool teachers and our preschools. That's important. That's history making because that was never the case before. And so a monthly subvention, subvention for the upkeep of schools has now been commissioned. And so teachers in charge, as we call the persons who, who lead, are in a better position to take care of the affairs of the preschools. We understand how important early childhood education is. In fact, if we get it right there, much of the work later down becomes easier. We were aware of it, and so we were happy to have made that decision. Right? So let me move along quickly though and focus because I don't want to overspeak. So I shared what I perceive as some of the successes that we have had since we've taken office. A couple of key areas of focus as part of our transformation agenda, we really want to focus education from early childhood through the mainstream right into adult and continuing education. We do recognize that some areas have been left out, not fairly treated, and so we want to give meaningful attention right across. We want to do emphasis in early childhood education. We know there are things we must do in the mainstream. We want to take care of our special needs populations. I know some people asked me about that last night. And we want to strengthen the, the support structures we have for them. And we also want to take care of adult and continuing education because we know there are gaps that we need to fill. The technologies are passing some of our adults by. So even when we move education, learning and online, our adults, many of them are not able to meaningfully cope and to support children, their children. And so we need to do some work there too, and that's part of the plan. And then we want to give good focus to transformation in ICT. COVID-19 pushed us in learning where there was a mass drive to distribute e-learning devices, and granted, that was absolutely necessary. When we look carefully at it, there's a lot more that needs to happen. The access, because when we looked at it, access was still a challenge for many. And then the ability to even to ensure that teachers were appropriately prepared and resourced to use those modalities, in some cases, proved to be a challenge because we have senior teachers too who would need the extra push and the extra support. And then coming out of that, apart from just access, we need a learning management system, which I think we've fallen short on, a strong, a robust learning management system that will cater for content development, content upload, interactive activity, so that it broadens, if we tie that in with access, then we create a stronger platform for our students to be able to meaningfully benefit from ICT. Along with that is a clear focus on areas like artificial intelligence, robotics and coding. So some discussions are already underway with our ICT department engaging not only the learning management system, but also the engagement of persons interested in coding and how it's going to work out, whether we start with problem solving, what's the best, the best map, roadmap to get to where we want to get in terms of letting our students leave with deeper skills in those areas. It's a clear commitment we have, and we are heading in that direction. There is also the, an increased awareness of the need for, for greater skills, technical and vocational education. I don't think we've done enough here that there are severe skills gaps, and we have taken note of that, and we are going to be deliberate about our attempts to increase the availability of skills education and the levels of skills education, the NVQs and the CVQs. And so we are looking at where we put it, not just in the school system, but in communities as well. Students in the communities can benefit from those facilities. We are quite thrilled at the challenge and the opportunities that exist before us, knowing full well that education is probably one of the single most transformative elements of this agenda that we talk a lot about. And so we look forward to your support, your collaboration. Feel free to be a part of the conversation. I said that last evening, and somebody took me up to it. Somebody said, "You said to be a part of the conversation," so I'm coming. And we appreciate that. It's really good to know that we have several Grenadians all over the world, New York in particular now, who are willing and ready, whom we can call on should we need support in ICT or early childhood or special needs, should we reach a roadblock. I mean, we have some degree of expertise at home, but your own experiences in a different first world society certainly could help to bring a broadened perspective that we will well benefit from as we move in our transformative agenda. So let me stop talk and say, I didn't even talk about student support and all of that. There's a lot to talk about, but I will just let you know that we are very, very thrilled at the prospect and the opportunity we have as a young energized NDC and a young energized team to be involved at this time in the transformation of Grenada and setting up a better, brighter future, and me particularly, through education. Thank you very much.
Anything good, fine. Anything biteable.
And yes, we are back. Nice, nice and nice. Doc, what's your takeaway?
Nothing so far. We are doing very well so far. The crowd is building and I'm loving it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Again, guys, we are...
We had only one thing that we need to highlight coming up soon, as soon as we get the space with the trump card issue.
Yeah, that, that.
But that coming up sometimes.
But there are some, there are some very key points that were said by the Minister of Education here, which I think is very important to note.
Touch, touch education and so forth, yes.
Especially dealing with coding and the educational standard.
Yes.
Because those are Jamaica, right? I was looking at a, at a news brief from, not Jamaica, Barbados, where the Prime, the Prime Minister is, the Prime Minister of Barbados is looking to, to, to move deeper into coding and make Barbados the epicenter of
Of coding.
Of coding in this region.
It's a big area.
It's a big, it's a big area, and gaming as well.
Yes, yes, yes.
Now, I, I think that it's important that the educational standards change
Yes.
For the times, for the new economy. And I think that that's very important, that we get stuff like coding and, and even telecommunications and monetization and all this stuff.
As the Minister said, we know where we are and we have a long way to go.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Guys, we are broadcasting live from the Brooklyn College. Let's go back on stage.
Good enough, thanks. Thank you, MC. Prime Minister, Honorable Deacon Mitchell, and I believe that this event was organized by the NDC New York chapter, so I'll give you your other title, Political Leader of the National Democratic Congress. Fellow Cabinet colleague, Honorable David Andrew, Minister for Education, Sports, Altair, and I didn't vote anything. Treasurer of the NDC, Sister Andrea St. Bernard, Public Relations Officer, taller man than Brother Orlando Romaine, Kira Lessey, Assistant to the Prime
me, Brother Orlando Romaine, Kira Lesi, Assistant to the Prime, Members of the Executive, General Membership, Grenadians and Friends of Grenada present and those following online. Good afternoon to all. We're a bit late, and I do not want to speak too long. So don't bother that, you see my water here. If I stay more than 10 minutes, stone me with marshmallows. Folks, I see a famous Calypsonian in here. And he sang many years ago, but I see two Calypsonians smiling. And funny enough, the one I was making mention of is a former schoolmate of mine, not classmates. I think he has thrown up a couple more calendars than I have. And the other one is a former student of mine, the big bad beast. Welcome. The Flying Turkey, some years ago, sang, "We have come a long way, but we still have a long way to go." And that is so true. 1979 was about, what, 43 years or so ago? In 1980, Grenada began a process of adding value to its agricultural produce, products, by initiating an agro-industrial plant 40-something years ago. Today, we are talking about starting agro-industries. And as the late African teller sang, "Yet we going forward." You heard the Honorable Minister of Education pointing out as an achievement the removal of school fees at the primary and the secondary level. Ladies and gentlemen, as much as the NDC government must be lauded for this, I cannot in good conscience call this progress, because that was something that the revolution did So what it tells us is that we have been on pause, or worse, in reverse gear for the past 30-something years. Fortunately, the people of Grenada were presented with a genuine alternative and did not hesitate to grasp it with both hands. And we pledge to you, sisters and brothers, that we are not going to disappoint you. The theme of this afternoon's event is working with Grenadians, home and abroad, to move Grenada forward. And this is a recognition that in the NDC, we do not create any artificial distinction between our sisters and brothers who reside in the homeland and those of you who have had to migrate to find opportunities that were not readily available at home. We complain about a lot of things, and we have every right to. But a few months ago, the political leader and I, we made a trip to South Florida, and we met a young man by the name of Freddie Figures. Funny enough, just a few weeks ago, while browsing the internet, I came across an article on the BBC website about him. And so I was pleasantly surprised to be sitting next to him just a few short weeks later. That is a young man who faced a lot of adversities in life. But each one that came his way, he saw it as an opportunity to do something, to make something, to invent something. And this is the approach that we need to take as we strive to move Grenada forward. So for example, you go to any grocery store in New York or in St. David's, and you're very unlikely to see anything labeled "Made in Grenada." Should we cry and fret about it? Maybe. But the enterprising ones among us must see that as an opportunity to do something, to make, to produce something, to put Grenada on the labels and to put Grenada on the map. So I'm putting out the challenge to all Grenadians, home and in the diaspora, to start looking at the problems we have and coming up with the solutions to them. When was the last time any of you had a tanya log? Right? When was the last time some of you had some oatmeal? Right? Do you know where oats are grown? Have you ever seen a tree or vine, whatever it is that it grows on? No. But we all know what tanya looks like. So what is stopping us, those with the technical expertise, those with the financial resources, to start making log in a baguette? I mean, you could come up with a sexier name than that. So this is a kind of challenge that, as Minister responsible for trade and export development, I'm throwing out to you. Put your technical expertise and your money into the future of our country. We wish to engage the diaspora meaningfully. I remember saying some seven years ago at a forum similar to this somewhere in Brooklyn, that in the NDC, we do not see the diaspora as a milking cow, that when you want something, you go to them. We have to take the engagement and apply a measure of reciprocity to the relationship. There are other areas, streets, many of them retire and go back home to paradise. And I'm not talking about St. Andrew, Brother David. You wish to retire and go to St. Patrick. But you are concerned, rightly so, about the poor standards of healthcare in our country. Looking for the next Freddie Figures to step forward, use the expertise that you have gained here and elsewhere. Use the capital that you have accumulated over the years. Team up with your friends. Put a proposal to the government, and let us work to move the healthcare system forward. Going back to the question of adding value, if you buy a snapper, it has a lot of bones, tastes good. In Grenada, I think it's retailing at about 10 EC per pound. I'm not sure that the ordinary Grenadian can afford to buy a pound of fillet snapper. All of these are simple areas that we can invest in, add value, make money for yourselves, and add something to the economy of our country. That is the type of engagement we'd like to see. Curing, dehydrating, fish, agricultural produce, tremendous opportunities exist in these areas. And again, we are asking you to come forward with your ideas, your expertise, and your money, and let us make it happen together. Air transportation is a nightmare. In Grenada, sometimes we feel like Robinson Crusoe. We can't get out. Or for those of an older vintage, we feel like Brian Nancy on Bud Sherry Island. What is stopping you from teaming up with friends, putting a proposal to the government and saying, "Hey, I have this idea. I can purchase or lease two aircraft, or maybe one to start." We had air Grenada many years ago that disappeared. Please don't ask me who made it disappear. I'm not going there. But seriously, this is the type of conversation that we need to have in order to break the isolation that we currently find ourselves in as it regards air transportation. In the field of foreign relations, we know that traditionally, we look towards North America, Europe, our Caribbean sisters and brothers, unfortunately to a lesser extent. But the world is bigger and wider than that. And our government is committed to deepening and widening our relationships with the rest of the world. And to that extent, we are going to make very deliberate attempts to cultivate relationships with the mother continent, our sisters and brothers in Africa. A few years ago, CARICOM took a decision to make Spanish the official second language of the CARICOM region. Yet we have done very little to cement, or first to establish and then cement, relationships with our sisters and brothers in Central and South Amer, South America. And this is going to be an area of focus for this NDC administration going forward. We are going to professionalize the foreign service. Over the years, an unfortunate situation developed where people were literally sometimes picked off the streets, and as one staffer said to me, "microwaved," and overnight made into diplomats to represent Grenada. People of dubious origins and character helped to bring shame on our country. Now, we recognize that given our limited financial resources, that we may not necessarily be able to fill all of our diplomatic posts with nationals. But we give you the commitment that in every instance, we are going to look first and foremost to and for a Grenadian. We are going to provide the necessary training. We are going to go on an aggressive recruitment drive to make sure that the best and the brightest among us are out there representing our country. In the few instances where we may have to depend on non-nationals to provide consular services and so on, we are going to ensure that they are properly vetted and that it is not going to be a system of pay for play. This is the type of thing that has landed us in hot waters before, and we are committed to avoid it, avoiding going down that road. Ladies and gentlemen, I believe that I've exceeded my 10 minutes. And so I wish to thank you for organizing this event, for inviting us, for coming out to hear us, to listening. And as the motto of the NDC goes, "Let the people's voices be heard." We are going to be here, prepared to answer your questions as truthfully as we possibly can. I thank you very much for your attention.
Again, guys, you are live inside of Brooklyn College. I also want to say really quickly, guys, that we want to, we will give the folks on the broadcast an opportunity to ask questions to the panel. Right? So you can prepare your questions. I'm working on getting a microphone over to our area broadcast booth right here. And as soon as that podium is open for questions, we'll try to pose as much questions as they will be able to take from the live broadcast. But it's still an opportunity, guys, that if you want, share, I put it on a page, invite others to watch. And if you, however, is somewhere in the New York area, you still have an opportunity to come on down and be a part of this massive and festive event.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, New York. Good afternoon to, well, it's evening, almost. Good evening to you, the wonderful audience of New York City. It's an absolute pleasure to be here. And I checked the program I was given, and the program says at 5:30, it should be question and answer. And it's 5:30. And the hallmark of a tongue-haul is that we should be hearing more from the tongue and less from the people at the podium. So we have two options. If there are mics in the crowd, the mic should be given to the audience, and I'm happy to start the question and answer right off the bat. But let me say this. First, let me recognize Bernard Bone, Chairman of the New York Chapter, for the effort, time, and resources that he and his had to, no doubt, over the last several weeks, to plan last night's activity. And so to all of those who volunteered or helped contribute toward events, I want to say a special thank you. I think last night was wonderful. It was energetic. Those of you who missed it, you missed a good time. So I'm sure the next time when you're invited, you'll ensure that you're there. So really, it's heartfelt appreciation, Bernard, to you and your team. I know you've stayed the course over the last several decades, championing the national causes. And this is an NDC event, so a special thanks and appreciation to you and the team. So if you could, a round of applause for Bernard. To my colleagues Andrea and Orlando, who've journeyed up as part of the National Executive of the National Democratic Congress, they are part of the team who, 10 months, 11 months ago, took the leap of faith and chose the National Democratic Congress out of all of the other organizations that they could have joined. And that was testimony, again, to their belief in the principles and the values of the National Democratic Congress. Without principles and without values, you're blown in the wind. And with you in any which way it desires, and without a compass. And so clearly, the resurgence and the victory of the National Democratic Congress at the June 23 elections, the recognition that though you may be knocked out a couple of times, as long as you are not dead and buried, you can always rise again, and you can always fight again, and you can always be victorious again. To my colleague, the Honorable Minister for Foreign Affairs and Trade, he too has stood the test of time. Listening to his stories, I think he's been in public service or politics one way or another since the 1970s. He's persevered, he's never given up, and the people of you are fortunate to have him as their parliamentary representative. Because he too has suffered under the hands of "Don't go there" for his steadfastness to principle and to value. And, and "Don't go there" has a habit of wanting to buy or purchase everything and everybody. And when And when they reference that you're not a transaction, that you're invaluable, and you are priceless, and you can't be bought or sold, they eventually get the message. So I think eventually, they left him alone, and so we're happy to have him here. The Minister of Education, thank you for joining up with me. We are attending events tomorrow together to deal with transforming education and transformative values issue. And I was happy to hear him address you on the current trends that we intend to address and the current issues we intend to address in our education system in Grenada. Because make no mistake about it, if we are going to transform Grenada, we have to transform the education system. And if we are going to transform our people, we have to transform the education system. And some of that transformation might be uncomfortable, it might be painful, but we have to do it. We have no other choice. Our only asset, not just our best, our only asset is the people of Grenada. And if we don't invest in knowledge, don't invest in education, if we don't spend more of our budget and more of our GDP on education, we will continue to be not just in stagnation, but in the reverse mode he has spoken about. Reality is, we had a period of forward movement between 1979 and 1983. But certainly from 1985 onwards, our education system has remained largely stagnant. It is not aligned to economic reality. And I can give you a simple example. The landmass of Grenada is 27 times smaller than the territorial sea of Grenada. Yet, there is almost no reference in our education system to the ocean, to the sea, to our beaches, to our coral reef, to fishing, to preservation of our fish stock, to learning to fish, to the preservation of fish, to the processing of fish, or to the sale of fish. Our education system makes absolutely no reference to that issue. It makes no reference to boat building, to boat repairs, and the list goes on and on. That is the reality. You only learn to build a boat if you're from PT Martinique and Karaku. Or from Gov, or Marion, or Subi's. That's the truth. But if you're not from these villages, the likelihood that you learn how to build a boat or repair a boat is slim. It's either because you have an uncle, or a father, or a brother, or someone who will pass that knowledge on. But our formal education system does not address that alone. And I make this point to say, it is not that difficult to transform Grenada. It is not that difficult to match our education system to the actual realities of what we face. But seems over the last 30 or 35 years, not to have been any political or leadership will to do so. But that stops, that stopped on the 24th of June 2022. And so the focus on vocational education, the focus on skills training is going to be paramount as part of the education process. But there's also an underlying factor that we have to deal with. The man who makes his money practicing law is not qualitatively superior than a man And we have to make it known particularly to our young people that you're not less of a man because you're a tailor, or carpenter, or shoemaker, or bus driver. So that we could shift the mindset of our young people, so that they don't feel that to arrive, you need to be dressed in a suit and tie, or you need to be dressed to make money ultimately to be able to lead your country. And that is part of the mindset we need to change. And the diaspora is uniquely placed to help us change that mindset. Because I know many of you don't make your money practicing law or practicing medicine. And Uncle Sam Dollar doesn't ask you whether he made it as a painter, or a lawyer, or carpenter, or bus driver. So when you send the money back home, or when you come back home to send that money, I need you to encourage our Grenadians to know that it doesn't matter where it comes from, as long as you worked for the money. And so when we talk about transforming Grenada, it means having these kinds of conversations and opening up, and I'm going to use this word here, leadership of Grenada. It is not the politicians alone who are going to be able to accomplish this. If we do not, as Grenadians, those of us who are in a position to advocate, to do, and to implement, if we do not take Grenada by the scruff of its neck during this period, and I mean this, we are going to lose the opportunity to do so. Because we are fighting a culture and a counterculture. Over the last 30 years, we've had a culture in Grenada which says, government must do everything. We've had a culture which encourage people not to work. We've had a culture which has said it is okay to be poor. It is okay to fight for the crumbs of the table. So our people fight for the jobs that pay the least. And it's a mindset that has been fostered upon them purely to buy their votes, to create a reservoir of votes so that people can be transacted. So if you don't vote for me, I don't give you little crumbs. And that has created an entire generation of Grenadians who we now have to re-educate to say, you shouldn't just want $1,000 a month, you shouldn't work for $800 a month, you shouldn't work for $1,200 a month, you should be working for substantially more than And it is our job to provide the infrastructure and the opportunities for you to make your own money rather than depending on $800 or $1,200 from the government. So the examples given by the Honorable Joseph Andal are real examples. The reality is, everything grows in Grenada. But there is no organized food, storage, collection, preservation, and distribution system within Grenada. If you look at the history of our food, the entire setup is geared towards importing our food, storing the imported food, and then distributing it in minivans and trucks throughout the island. And we have not, and it's actually gotten worse, because with the concentration on tourism and with the destruction wrought, for the last 18 years, we have not concentrated on replanting our food. We have not invested in the collection of coal depots, facilities, or any distribution network to distribute food in Grenada. So when COVID-19 hit and the containers couldn't come out of Miami, within two weeks, all our supermarkets were empty. Within two weeks, there was no brown sugar at the supermarkets, no white sugar, and the lines for food were as long as you could imagine them on an island where everything grows. So the reality is, we have to invest in our food security. And it isn't that difficult. We need to organize storage facilities that allows us to store food, that allows us to extend the shelf life of food, and that allows us to distribute food. And I give simple examples. Minister of Education, I believe there's about 10,000 to 20,000 students in the education system in Grenada. If you had a market of 10,000 to 20,000 people, your business would be successful. A simple thing, and I've used this example over and over, policy decision that says each child must eat a banana a day would mean you'd have to produce 20,000 bananas a day. By five days a week, that's 100,000. That's 100,000 bananas a month. So we didn't need to export the bananas to England. But when we were prevented from doing so, we never focused on ourselves, and the banana industry died. But it's a simple industry to revive by simply saying, we will feed our own children with our food, and we will give them natural starch that are healthier by simply doing so. But it is not just the growing of the bananas. Someone has to pick them, someone has to store them, someone has to ensure they ripen, and then we have to have the distribution system that allows it to be distributed consistently at the schools. And I'm saying right there is our business model. So it requires some investors, and I can certainly tell you from the policy level, I'm prepared to write tomorrow, each child must eat a banana a day in schools. But even if we did it, to implement it, we need the investment, and we need the people who are prepared to take the business idea and run with it. And I'm saying those are the opportunities that are open and ready and available in for Grenadians in the diaspora and Grenadians at home to collaborate on. Now, it may sound simple, but the reality is, a simple mind shift like that does a number of things. It creates employment, it forces our people, our children in particular, to eat healthier, and it helps to address some of the chronic health issues that have already crept into our young people. Diabetes, obesity, hypertension, there are young people in Grenada with significant kidney diseases and kidney failure. So I'm saying this to say, that simple example points to some of the major transformational change in mindset, change in behavior, but there are business opportunities associated with it that we need to be able to do in Grenada. And we could take the same approach. As opposed to the chicken we import from Brazil, we can say it's the fish from PT Martinique. And between those two things, you have a guaranteed market and guaranteed economic activity, and you don't have to send all your foreign currency outside of Grenada. So I can certainly say, as a government, as a political organization, we recognize those are some of the changes that we have to make deliberately. And I've just spoken here on the question of food security and its impact on industry, business, and our health. But almost every aspect of Grenadian life faces a similar challenge. We are billing hotels, and then the hotels are coming to the government to say, we want concessions to import into Grenada food of all kinds and to not pay the customs duties because we can't find the food in Grenada. That's the reality. So it doesn't benefit you. Because even though the hotels are here, we are not taking advantage of the opportunities because we are not producing and we are not part of the supply chain. And then they're saying, well, it's not our fault that we can't buy the food in Grenada. So if you don't want the hotels to collapse, if you don't want the workers working in the hotel to be sent home, we are almost forced to give them the concessions so that they could import the food into Grenada. But if we give them the concessions, it means the government is collecting no revenue, and we get trapped in this vicious cycle that happens over and over again. And that is the challenge we face. But as the storyteller, Brother Andal, said, for every threat or challenge, there's an opportunity. And I think that is what we need to recognize, that the opportunities are there. So I'm saying to you as a diaspora, the opportunities are there. And I'm going to make this further point. Even if the hotels want to import the food, they should be using you in the diaspora to buy the food from, to send it home. But the opportunities are there for us to not just fix those problems, but to thrive in providing the solutions. I prefer to see them as challenges that we face as a developing nation. Grenadians are distinguished and talented and succeed wherever they go. And that mindset needs to be reinforced in Grenada as well. Our children and our adults must understand that they're citizens of the world, not just a small island. Always punch way above our size. And you don't need me to inspire you. You have Kieran James, you have Anderson Peters, and you have the tons of other Grenadian athletes who always punch above their weight. I believe per capita, we perhaps have the greatest medal count at the World Championships and Olympics of any country in the world. So it is rarely for us to seize this opportunity. I can tell you this, we are not a government who's worried about being criticized. I welcome the criticism. Because once you get over the emotional reaction, there's always some wisdom hidden somewhere there that can help you to grow. You had to put your mouth in basket to tell us what you have to say. As long as you're prepared to work, as long as you're prepared to build your country, Grenada will be the freest country. You could run your mouth from now till thy kingdom come. What I want to know is that you're prepared to roll up your shirt sleeves. We are prepared, we will disagree at times, but we are prepared to remember that we are building a nation together and that we are better together. And that we don't just need to move forward, we need to leap forward because we've wasted a couple decades, particularly after the fall of the PRG government. So I said this was question and answer, and all you make me start to talk. And I feel like I've been talking, you might have to throw marshmallows at me. So this is question and answer time, and I'm happy to entertain your questions, your comments, your suggestions until we call it quits. So thank you very much again for your support.
Are we sitting down for the questions or standing up?
Okay, folks, just want to tell you a bit how we're going to do this.
Well, I think they understand the assignment. We understand the assignment, right? We have microphones on the left and the right.
Mic, mic two, right, thank you.
Mics on the left.
Mic two, mic two.
And right.
Mic two. Mr. Prime Minister and Mr. Minister of Education, I'm speaking specifically of libraries. It seems that, Mr. Prime Minister, since you might, it seems like you're not going to move into Monroey, the official residence. So maybe you can turn that house into our national library and museum, and the grounds, since it's surrounding or close to the parliament building, turn that ground, those grounds into our national zoo or botanical garden. That's my, so the other question I had was for the ambassadorship, because in New York, we have had no representation for a very, very long time. And somebody, anyway, I'll go edit that. So we need, we need to know about some representation here in the diaspora, in New York specifically, as it relates to our consulate, as it relates to our ambassadorship. And now there's an ambassador for the UN, but nobody knows who that is, never heard of her, sometimes very far away.
Regarding the question of ambassadorships and filling diplomatic positions, we are currently in the process of working on that, and we wish to assure you that we have not run into this simply because we want to get it as right as possible. So not only are we looking at the consulate general here and the ambassador to the UN, but we're also looking at Washington and all of our other diplomatic missions around the world. That usually takes a process. You You, well, this doesn't apply to the UN, but to most other diplomatic postings, not a receiving country. So there's a process that we have to go through, a process of selection and then asking the intended host country to receive that person whom we are going to designate as your ambassador. After that is done, if they're accepted, then we have to go through another process that unfortunately has to be considered outside of Grenada, which is a discussion down the road. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you. In terms of the library, now library facilities, that's something we are extremely keen on. It's something we have already engaged preliminary discussions on. In fact, we've recently visited the library as part of our initial assessment of the facility with a view to taking the most appropriate course of action, whether it's immediate repair or relocation. So rest assured that we have already engaged the library discussion. As we speak, there is digitizing of the archives of the stuff there so that it's an ongoing process, but sooner than later, you would hear some public discussion about our position on the national public library and not just the public library, but other libraries across different parishes. Thank you.
We will entertain a question from gentlemen on the other side of the room. In the meantime, I'd like to try exchanging the knives.
No problem.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mister Prime Minister. Good evening to the head TV. Let me first congratulate you on that victory in June. So thankful for that. It was a breath of fresh air. I must say, I haven't felt that way about an individual since Maurice Bishop. And I just want to make a suggestion this evening, I want to be short. The NDC over the years, since Nicholas Bruffett, has struggled with leaders. They have always been looking for leaders. Tom Guardia came along. But I don't want us to continue that way. And what happens a lot of times is that parties win election, they get into government and they forget the party. I want the party to become a serious institution. I want there to be regular leadership courses and classes ever so often within the party so that we can build a cadre of leaders going forward and we don't have to always be looking, going all day looking for leaders as we move forward in the future. Again, I beg that the party be taken seriously and we have serious courses and classes that we would build leaders for the future. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you very much for the suggestion. Very well said. I want to say this, when I joined the National Democratic Congress, and that still is my goal, I joined because I recognized the need for NDC as an institution to be strengthened. I didn't join because I was interested in becoming a political leader. And becoming a political leader is to some extent still an aside. And I want to say this because I came from Jamaica prior to arriving here and I attended the PNP's eighty-fourth annual convention and it's still ongoing today. And Jamaica is only six years as an independent nation, which means the PNP existed prior to Jamaica's independence. Now, in the context of Grenada, there's a political organization that is now essentially defunct, which if party building and institutionalizing of institutions and paying emphasis to it had happened, which is the GLP, it too would have been celebrating seventy-something plus years or so as an organization. But it is not, and it is not because we do not, and our political organizations, as you pointed out, have not invested in the institution. And a political party is more than a governor and it is more than a government. And one of the things we are committed to is to building the NDC. You need to say this, one of the goals under my leadership is to have a party headquarters owned by the party and the membership of the party so that that could symbolize an institution that not just party members, but the citizens of Grenada could use. So the aim is to build a multipurpose center that functions as the party headquarters, but that can be used to serve all the citizens of Grenada. None of the political parties in Grenada currently have that. And this is just one of the states it goes under my leadership. But on the question of leadership and on the question of training and educating, it is absolutely crucial that we do so. And that is one of the things, that's why I said your suggestion is well made, and that is one of the things I am committed to. And I will say this, although I know some people don't like to hear it. That is part of the reason why I have said I'm doing this for ten years, because we have to make sure that we build the next generation of leaders to come. And you cannot do that if you want to grab on and hold on to office until people have to kick you out. Thank you.
We entertain a question from the right side of the room.
Hi, Mister Prime Minister and representatives on the panel. So my name is Janel Lord and I am a registered nurse here in New York and I'm also a part, a member of the Grenada Carico and Pitymartnik Nurses Association. So basically, most of our members are very passionate about going back to the islands and giving back of our services, donating our services to do like health clinics, et cetera, because as a nation, you know that we are getting more unhealthy, whether it be here or back home. So my question is if there's already like policies or with the Ministry of Health so that we can more streamline us being able to go back to the islands on our own time to give back. And I think my president across the hall might just build on that a little bit. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for the question and to the nurses and all of the other healthcare practitioners who have in the past donated their time, their resources, their effort to helping improve healthcare in Grenada. Let me extend my profound thank you and gratitude on behalf of the citizens' home. This government, and I'm saying this because I'm aware that it hasn't always been like that, is open and completely receptive to receiving assistance of all kinds from the diaspora, particularly when it comes to healthcare. So I'm giving you the personal assurance that if you meet any roadblock or any obstacle or any bureaucratic snafu, then you can hold me and the Minister of Health responsible to ensure that we clear those up so that we can benefit from your assistance and from your expertise. Because the truth is, we need it. The population knows that we need it and the days of pride and all of that are over. And I can give a simple example, oral healthcare, dental healthcare. A couple of years ago, pre-COVID, I think it was 2018, a group of Carico nationals led by a Grenadian dentist out of Toronto, visited Grenada for a week. And the data produced is startling. It's hundreds of, hundreds of citizens and almost to a T, everyone had cavities, which means our primary healthcare, primary dental, primary oral healthcare system either doesn't exist or is significantly failing us. And we can't pretend that that's not the case, that is the case. And significant investment has to be made in that area. But in the meantime, we need the help, we should be welcoming the help. And as a government, we are committed to ensuring that as a starting point, basic primary healthcare is improved and is invested in so that our people's healthcare can improve as we go along. So to the nursing association, we want to put in place a national volunteer association, both in Grenada and outside of Grenada, so that we can give official recognition to our volunteers who have the expertise irrespective of your particular field of interest. Obviously, it will be based on your expertise and the area so that we can mount a national volunteers association that has official recognition and sanction from the government to go into our communities and do the volunteer work until the government is in a position to do it itself. And even if the government is in a position to do it itself, so that we can help improve the healthcare on the island.
Next question.
Good afternoon, Prime Minister. Protocol already in place. As one of my members just said, healthcare. I'm the president of Grenada Carico Pitymartnik Nurses Association and I'm glad to hear the Minister of Education and Sport talked about the children because that was one of our concern, one of it that we found young children with diabetes when we went home. And that and obesity, that was a concern. And we've also in the last couple of years have, when we've tried to go home or we've gone home, we've met resistance. We've gone to do clinics on our own with the Ministry of Health and then we get home, we didn't get the support that we were promised. So that's why we're asking those questions. And we would like to continue doing healthcare and doing seminars, doing clinics, that's not a problem. But we have also a problem right now that we ship stuff to the nursing homes and they never receive for them. And their names are on the things that we've sent and it still has not arrived. It has landed in Grenada and it was claimed, that we were told, but it still has not arrived to the nursing homes. So we're asking that those things we looked into because it's not something that when we work hard for our own people, that we would like to see it reach where it was intended.
So thank you for the comments. I just want to make the point that as a new administration, we've heard those concerns raised in the past of persons sending things particularly for homes or institutions that provide care for children and it not reaching the desired recipients. So one of the things we will be exploring is looking at having a centralized entity that these things can be shipped to, who will then be responsible for making sure that they get to the desired recipients that we can hold accountable. Because obviously, sometimes people do take on their own and they may send things down and then you have to get to deal with the reality that even if you're sending it as a donation, when it gets there, customs duties have to be paid, et cetera, et cetera. And sometimes people are not aware of that. So one of the things we will be looking to do is to be able to streamline particularly medical supplies, which are sent for NGOs, the homes, people doing charity work, et cetera, the schools, to make sure that one, they are accounted for, two, to make sure that the persons who send them know that they've been received, and then three, to ensure that they get to the right recipients, and then four, that the appropriate expressions of gratitude and so on are sent back so that people know that it is received and people can say thank you.
We entertain a question from the right side of the room.
Good afternoon, Mister Prime Minister, other ministers, ladies and gents. My name is Mister Alvin Augustine, better known as Daddy from Gove. Mister Annel should know me well. We grew up in the neighborhood. And my concern is the incentive for the people who are retiring in the diaspora. And I'm speaking on my behalf, a few of my colleagues and maybe other people who have the same sentiment like me. Now, I know myself and others wants to come home, but when we prepare to come home, we have, we don't have enough incentive for us to come home to invest. For example, I can just give one example. I had a vehicle, what is eight years old, with forty thousand miles on it. And only because the time I got ready to come home in the next three to four years, I would not get that duty-free concession on it based on the past government. Because as been said, he has to be ten years and under. And I mean, it was in good condition and I had so forced to sell it to get a new vehicle because the time I ready to come home, I had to pay the full duty on it. And myself and others is planning to ease the burden on the system of the government, like trying to do small investment to employ people, which I know what I grew up in, in the early days, where people had more boats that they could employ people to go fishing. They had lands that they could have employed people to send their children to school and put food on the table and they would have able to work in their house and do other things. But because the incentives from the past government, it's not appealing a lot of people rather to just maybe go to Florida or stay in America and sit on the two dollars that they have. So I just only asking if you can look into this system to, for the people from the diaspora who planning to come home to maybe employ one or two people. So if twenty people come home and they employ five people, that will take out the strain on maybe the people who was Imani and other people. Because what I'm seeing too, when I was a boy growing up and I go to St. George's, most of the business places was owned by Grenadian. But now, three-quarter of the business place owned by foreigners, all right? The only set of businesses I see owned basically by Grenadians is in my parish in Gove. Most of, all the boutiques are Gove or Grenadian owned. So if we have more incentive, maybe we might be able to come back and able to do some more things because I have a lot of plans and if I can't do it myself, maybe my colleagues and I can team up and get it done so we could able to get a lot of youth employed in Grenada,
So thank you for the suggestions and the questions. I will answer it by saying we will review the entire, for want of a better word, diaspora package that currently exists. We recognize, first, obviously, the government does need revenue, so I'm not going to pretend that we don't need revenue. And in Grenada's case, the government's two main sources of revenue are customs duties and inland revenue taxes. That's the truth. That's where the bulk of the revenue comes from. And so it's always a question of finding the right balance between encouraging business, encouraging investment, and the government getting revenue to pay for the services it needs. But I agree that specifically in relation to the diaspora, some deeper consultation and perhaps some more targeted investments, particularly for persons who are wanting to return home to do business, can be looked at. On the question of the age of vehicles, that's a policy that was implemented by the prior administration. There is some merit to it insofar as we have to accept, we have to accept that physically, the state of Grenada roads means at some point in time, we may have to limit the number of vehicles on the roads. That's the reality and we may have to invest more in mass public transit. So those are some of the issues when we talk about sustainability and the environment and so on that we have to deal with. I mean, if you're in Grenada now, there's cement trucks and forty-foot containers zapping up on long roads that were not meant even for horse-drawn carriages. So it's part of the development plan for infrastructure that we have to address. So those are some of the issues that we need to have deeper consultations with both with Grenadians in Grenada and Grenadians in the diaspora to make sure that we have the right balance of sustainability as well as the right investment packages to encourage Grenadians who want to come back home, particularly to invest in businesses. So we are here, we've made the note and it's something that I think we will be engaging with in the future for better discussions and to come up with a more optimum solution. So thank you for the comment.
Thank you. Folks, before we take the next question from you in this auditorium, we would also Folks, before we take the next question from you in this auditorium, we would also like to accommodate a question from someone on social media. And to the panel, someone is asking whether or not the government is going to take steps to include Carriker and Pity-Martinic on the Grenadian passport.
Well, I probably should say that this has been attempted already, and it was not successful. Recall, we had a referendum in Grenada, which included Pity-Martinic and Carriker on the passport, and the referendum was voted down. Well, every aspect of the referendum, including the issues, was voted down. So it's, it sounds simple, but the reality is that it requires constitutional change, and the constitutional change requires the people to vote in a referendum, and you need a majority of votes to get it done. So if I had the simple power to change it, I would, but I don't. And as simple as it sounds, we are prisoners of our constitution until we get to the point where our population can be educated enough, and where the issues that go to a referendum are not politicized. Because if, when you're in opposition, you're supporting it, and when you're in government, you're against it, then we'll never be able to make some of the meaningful changes that needs to be made. So it's not just the name on the passport, there are a number of other things we need to, there are a number of things I would like to do, but I can't do it without the people agreeing and passing it via a referendum.
Thank you, Mr. Prime Minister. And just to let you know, we're going to have the other question right after this, we are going to be giving away something later. Those of you who have your tickets, please hold on to them. We'll have a raffle for a few gifts that will be distributed right before we leave here, right after the question and answer segment. Next question, please.
Good evening to the head table, Prime Minister and the officials. To the Minister of Education, I'd like to say congratulations. Also, you stress a lot on education, but I would like you to stress too on culture. Because growing up in a little village in Grenada, in St. Anjou, we also, we always have cultural group, where you do folk dancing, folk singing, and all these things. Now you go back home and it's sad, because the youths now, they have nothing to do but to sit by a rum shop. So I would like to see you bring back culture, also, you know, bring back football and netball and things up in directory, okay? Alright, for the Minister of Agriculture, in February, I was in Grenada, and it saddened my heart to see three young kids running after people. Miss, could you buy, could you make me send some tomatoes, right? And when you look at it, I asked one of the young children, they look like 12 and so, where are you from? Tillyreese. How did you get here? We took the bus to come down to St. George's, with a little basket each of them had. So my suggestion is that, yes, the kids want to grow plants and fruits and whatnot, but have it like, you grow tomatoes, you grow lettuce, you grow this. So you wouldn't have only tomatoes coming. And at the end of the day, because I went back to St. George's the evening, and there were a lot of tomatoes in the drain near to by right. And somebody said, that's always happening, because when they stay out there in the sauna all day, they cannot go back up to the country, they just throw there. So I would like you to just look into those things. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you very much for your question. The Minister of Agriculture unfortunately is not here with us, but of course, your sentiments can be recorded and shared with him. I don't know if the PM would want to say anything about that, of course, he has the privilege to do that. But let me speak about the issue of culture. In fact, we are pretty serious about that too. We, the creative industry seeks to set a foundation for that. Part of the curricular reform that we are intent on doing is increasing and introducing more of the creative and performing arts in our schools. The calypso writing, the poetry, the arts festivals, that formerly used to take place in our schools, that gave a good platform for many of these cultural activities to be grounded and embedded. We plan to reintroduce those, so have no fear. We are going to genuinely put culture as a main feature. And we understand how significant a part history, our own history plays in that. And so part of our plan that we've already engaged is to have some publishers engaged in documenting our local history for instruction in upper primary and lower secondary school in preparation for the Caribbean history syllabuses. So all of these things combined together to create that increase in awareness of our own heritage, our own culture, our own history, that would see us deliver a better product in terms of culture. Thank you.
Well, on the question of, we have the Minister of Foreign Affairs, Export and Trade, and he gave a lot of examples about some of the things we need to do in agriculture. But I think the point, which I made earlier, which is a point as a government we intend to address, is that the young kids should not be taking a bus from Tillyreese to come and sell tomatoes in St. George's. That shouldn't be happening. And fundamentally, as a government, what we want to achieve is either the MNIB, or some restructured version of it, or to encourage the private sector to invest in buying from the farms themselves, the tomatoes, and storing the tomatoes at the temperatures that would allow the tomatoes to have an extended shelf life, to ensure that, and I think the Minister of Export made that point yesterday, apples doesn't grow year wrong, but you can find apples to eat at the supermarket year wrong. And tomatoes probably can grow year wrong, but even if it's seasonal in Grenada, our job is to encourage public-private partnership that allows us to store it and distribute it, so that when production is low, you can still get the same supply. And when production is high, you can regulate the supply so that the prices do not drop to a point where it's not attractive to produce. And that is what I mean about the food distribution system and the opportunity for investment. Because a lot of small people can grow tomatoes, but it's one thing to grow tomatoes, it's another thing to have to go and sit on the side of the road in Hotsun for the whole day, to try and sell it yourself. And so where we really need the support is in the logistics of the collecting, the purchasing, the collecting, the storing, and the retailing of things like tomatoes and all our fruits, from breadfruit, tanya, yams, dachshins, we can go on and on. Most of the fruit vendors in Grenada sell the fruit in Hotsun, which means they are decreasing the shelf life of the fruit, probably by 60, 70%, right? So simple things like introducing chiller trucks, where the fruit can be stored at cooler temperatures to preserve them, are areas that people can invest in. And those are the kinds of things that we want to be able to do, to ensure that we have the kind of food security, and to ensure that a 12-year-old stays in school, rather than finds himself having to hustle for his living.
Thank you very much, Prime Minister. We're getting some feedback on the microphone. Sounds like wiring. Or maybe the battery is dying. Okay. Just before I take the question from the lady on the other side of the room, someone sent a question to the Prime Minister, Mr. PM, I am a Saint Lucian who has followed the rise, who has followed your rise, from leader in opposition to now government leader. I've always looked to the Grenadian music industry with envy. Grenada has some of the biggest soco artists to compete with even Trinidad. I would like to know, what will your government do to create structure for music industry in Grenada? The talent exists in Grenada, the right structure needs to be put in place, and assessment of the existing data needs to take place, and then the necessary implementation of a music industry initiative needs to take place, from someone in Saint Lucia. Yes.
Alright, thank you for the question. Orlando Main, Public Creatives Officer, but I'm also responsible for developing Grenada's creative economy. And let me share the word, not industry economy. There's a lot of things that's possible in the creative space. We live in the information age, and sometimes I don't think people truly get what that means. It is the number one consumed commodity, information, data. We all watch movies, we all read books, magazines, animation, we play games, and we have to ask ourselves, who creates these things? Alright, it's a multi-billion dollar industry, and Grenada is not participating significantly in that industry. But our government have identified that sector as one of the sectors that can truly create transformation for Grenadians, particularly our youth. There's a few things that's very unique about the creative economy, music included. The barriers to entry is relatively low. What it really requires is your intellectual capacity, creativity, or your life experiences. And so it is the one sector that almost every single person can participate in without having to incur huge capital costs, alright? And so it has the potential to create a lot of employment really fast. But beyond the economic value of it, it also has some significant social value. If you think of America, and why America is so well-known, or known as the Mecca of the world, is because of Hollywood. The way Hollywood was able to position America through film, movies and stories. And so we have a real opportunity to redefine who we are through music, film, documentaries and books. But there's a few things we have to do before we get to that point, and that is really structuring the sector. So we have begun the process of recruiting some consultants who can help us do the baseline assessment as to where we are currently. There's a lot of things happening home, but it's quite disjointed, alright? And so we want to establish a registry of creatives, and to truly understand what is the current activity and the value of the activity from a GDP standpoint at home right now. Once we've established that, we'll then use that baseline study to develop a long-term strategy for developing the creative economy and the creative sector. Initially, we want to focus on a few verticals, film, music and fashion. And so the outcome of that will be various incentives, policies, legislations that will help create the right enabled environment for creatives to thrive. And again, it's not just the youth. I mentioned yesterday in a meeting that when our seniors retire, they are retiring with value, equity, that is their life experiences. Each and every one of you inside here have a story to tell. How can we convert those stories into dance, into music, into documentaries, into novels, into magazines? And so the economic life of our citizens can be extended through the creative economy. So it's something we're very excited about, and it's something we're going to put a lot of emphasis and effort in developing, but developing in a very structured and strategic manner. So you can expect to hear a lot more about it as we do our research and engage the right consultants and persons to help us truly build on what I think could be the next revolution for Grenada. We didn't get it right with tourism, agriculture, but we have for the first time the opportunity to control a sector that will be the frontier of many economies going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Orlando. From the right side of the room.
Good evening, Mr. Prime Minister and members of the panel. My name is Marilyn Ogilvy, and I'm here with a question on the health and hospital situation. I know many of us who migrated to the United States and other countries, for me in particular, I'm like, okay, I'm going to go to America, stay a couple of years, make some money, come back home. But at this point in time, a lot of people who are retiring, who have retired, and the situation of the health and hospitals in Grenada is a real problem. There are people who have gone to Grenada and fell sick and had to fly back to the United States or to neighboring countries for medical help. As recently as earlier this year, one of my nephew's son, he was injured, he got cut in his eyes, and he went to the hospital. They did surgery on his eye, however, the retina in his eyes was misplaced. He, these are poor people we're talking about. We are, I don't like to say poor, because we have come from very far and we're in a better place now, thank God, but he was waiting on some help from the government to go to Trinidad, which is just a few miles away, to get some help, to reattach the retina in his eyes. The doctors or whoever did the surgery in Grenada did not do a good job. And so they had put out, I didn't even know about it, maybe if they had told me about it before, I probably would have done something. This happened in November, I knew about it in January. So they had to do a GoFundMe and all that stuff in order to get money to try and help the young man get, he's 21 years of age, he has his whole life ahead of him. So we, as family members, came together, we put the money together, we sent it to Trinidad, directly to the hospital. We were told that the Grenada government is going to donate $1,000 US dollars. We came up with almost $5,000 US dollars. Because the young man had to sit and wait for the government to approve $1,000 US dollars, by the time he got to Trinidad. They couldn't reattach the retina to his eyes. My question to you, and it's in health in general, in general, there are people who say they're not going to go to the hospital if they're sick, because they prefer to stay home and die. It's a sad situation, very sad for a country, because health is supposed to be the most important thing for a country. The health of your people is supposed to be the most important thing. My question, and this is personal, I'm sorry, I said I wasn't going to cry, but I'm a crier, so just bear with me. What would you say to those people who are saying that they prefer to stay home and die than go to the hospital to get treatment? And what is the solution that this new government has or planning to put in place for situations regarding patients, emergency, urgent care, as well as medication and other matters of concern of the people?
Well, thank you for the question, and let me express, I don't know when it happened, and there are many of these kinds of horror stories coming out of our health system over the last several years, if not the last decade or two in Grenada. So certainly to the young man who probably lost his sight, you know, certainly I want to empathize with him and his family, and you and your family, and I'm sorry to hear of that situation. And in a sense, part of the reason I'm here today is because we've all heard or know someone who experienced some horror story or the other with the lack of adequate health services in Grenada. And that is something we are committed to fixing. We, it's aspirational, we know that it wouldn't happen overnight, but it has to be the political willpower to address the healthcare system. And I think I can safely say from my own interaction with Grenadians in Grenada and Grenadians in the diaspora, that the state of our healthcare tops all of the agenda items as the most critical issue that we need to address. So let me, I mean, the Minister of Health isn't here, but let me certainly say on his own behalf, that he is working around the clock to begin addressing the issues that we face in healthcare. But because the issues are, to some extent, chronic, it is going to require short-term, medium and long-term plan. I can start with the short-term plan. The plan is in fact to relocate the emergency ward by January of this year to what is described as the new building within the hospital compound. The aim therefore is to have a facility that is significantly improved. I'm aware that the staff within the Um, I'm aware that the, the staff within the Ministry of Health is actually aiming to try and have this done in October. Um, that's ambitious, if it does happen, obviously we would welcome it, but the, the realistic timeframe is, is January. So that's the starting point to relocate the emergency ward to uh facilities that are most suited for that. The second issue is, we need to strengthen our primary healthcare and our medical stations and clinics throughout the, the, the country so that everything doesn't come to the hospital. And that's part of the challenge we face. I think the statistics are saying that every month, the emergency and accident ward sees 2,000 persons. Now that's two per, 2,000 persons per month, that's 24,000 people per year. That's almost 25% of Grenada's population. And there is no way, there is no way that the issues that these 24,000 that requires you to be at the emergency and accident ward. And part of the reason for that is because everything is sucked into St. George's because we have not invested sufficiently in the health, uh, in the clinics and the medical stations and health stations around the island. And I'm subject to correction, but none of them open 24 hours a day. Right? And that's the starting point. We have to be able to genuinely leave the hospital and the emergency ward at the hospital for what I call mission-critical issues. And we need to staff and beef up our primary first point of contact, medical stations and so on, so that they can address most of the health issues that people come with, so that we do not have this relentless pressure on the hospital and so that people don't feel that the hospital is a morgue. There's something else we need to address, and it's, it, it was a similar situation with the teachers. Regrettably, I think the past administration has taken the approach that it is not on the same team as the doctors and the nurses and the other healthcare practitioners in Grenada. And if you go to war with yourself, you will kill yourself. And to a large extent, the horror stories you get out of the hospital is because the policymakers in the past went to war with our nurses or doctors and our healthcare practitioners. I think some of you might have been around when they were described as thieves and whatnot and whatnot. You are not going to motivate people when you demonize them and when you demoralize them. And you're not going to motivate them when you are not making any effort to improve their working conditions or the terms and conditions of service. So as a result, for example, most of our nurses, as they get an opportunity to leave Grenada, leave Grenada. So we are significantly understaffed when it comes to nurses. We are significantly, significantly understaffed when it comes to doctors per patient, and we are significantly understaffed when it comes to perhaps every other matrix that you use, you have to use in terms of support healthcare services. So that means our education system has the plan for beefing up our healthcare sector. So it means we need to know whether it's 500, whether it's a thousand, whether it's 1,500 nurses we need, and we have to produce them. We have to go out and actively say to our young people, to fix the healthcare system in Grenada, we need to produce over the next three, four, five years, 4,000 nurses. And we are incentivizing you to study becoming a nurse, or to study becoming a doctor, not just a doctor, but a specialist, or to study becoming a lab tech, or to study becoming a dentist, et cetera, et cetera. If we don't do that, even if we build a spanking new hospital, if you don't have the human resource to staff and run the hospital, it will become a morgue overnight as well. So that is the reality we face. So in order to transform our healthcare services, yes, we have to invest in it. We have to plan, we have to go and educate our population and create the professionals who need to work in the healthcare services, and we also need to work with the diaspora to help us doing so. So one of the things we are committed to doing under this initial tone of the National Democratic Congress is in fact significantly improve our healthcare in a deliberate and structured manner. So when I talk about producing the 1,500 nurses, our education system has to do so. When we talk about what are the scholarships we need and where are we giving scholarships, be in nursing, it will be in dentistry, it will be creating the lab techs, creating the mechanics and the engineers who can repair the extreme machines, et cetera, et cetera. Cause the machines come down, they break down, we have to send somebody from Trinidad or Barbados or the States to come and repair them. And we can go on and on, and that is the, the chronic challenge we face. I'd also say there's one other aspect of healthcare that we have to appreciate. It's expensive and it has to be paid for. And our current system only views it from an expenditure perspective. So the government has a budget and it spends what it can spend on healthcare, but the government itself doesn't really collect any revenue. So if you're a non-citizen of Grenada and you in Grenada and you meet in an accident and you go to the hospital, they can perform surgery on you and you walk out and you don't really have to pay, even if you have insurance, even if you have the ability to pay for it. So those are some of the things we have to correct, so that if you have insurance and you have the ability to pay, you need to pay so that we can help deal with those who can't pay. Right? There are other things we need to look at. Health insurance, for example. The truth is, even if you are well off, if you need major surgery, including in the United States, it could bankrupt you. And I think the statistics shows that the major cause of personal bankruptcy is usually healthcare. Some health-related issue, some accident, you could have been flying high, you meet in an accident, you can't walk, you have to pay the medical bills and overnight you become a pauper. So it is, at least for major medicals, certainly in the context of Grenada, we need to buy insurance for it. Because the likelihood that you'll have a hundred thousand in a bank account to pay for some major surgery is slim, right? And that's part of the reality. So whether it's five dollars a month, ten dollars a month, at least for the major medical operations, we also have to encourage people both from a government-sponsored national health insurance and encourage the private sector to provide more health insurance coverage for people, so that when they get to these critical situations where you need major surgery or you have some major medical that is expensive, that you can pay for it. Cause if not, we will continue to be in a situation where people are going around doing motorcades to collect five dollars there and ten dollars there to help this person to send this person to Trinidad or you have to start a GoFundMe because we are not planning for it. So we spend a lot of money on phone, data and all these kinds of things. We could put aside the twenty dollars a month to buy the healthcare insurance.
Thank you, Mr. PM. Well, a question from this side here.
Okay, uh, pleasant good evening to Mr. Prime Minister and member of your team. I have one statement and a question. I'm gonna start with the statement first. Um, normally as returning nationals, and I say returning nationals because we're coming home, sometimes we are hard-pressed by customs. A lot of times, you know, it's quite disturbing and sometimes frightening to even bring a little token because you might be subject to being searched and charged for tokens that you bring home to your family members and friends. Um, this is a statement that um I would like you to look into, and I'm pretty sure many people among me can testify to maybe similar feelings, right? So my question, um, first of all, I wanna congratulate you on your, your government for, you know, um, the accomplishments so far. One of something that I advocated a lot for is the docking of the teachers' pay and I was very disturbed by that. So I was very happy that you was able to pay back the teachers and also put plans in place to pay the pension. So we are, we are quite pleased about that, right? As you go about your business of pushing the country and moving the country forward in various ministries, I'm pretty sure that, you know, you might discover little corruption or wrongdoing on the part of the other side, or as you may say, don't go there, right? Quite, uh, just recently, uh, I noticed a video making its ways on, um, on, on social media, um, with regards to two government officials, um, using the name Grenada and the word corruption in the same sentence, um, speaking of the past corrupt regime. And I don't want to really use that word because it's not a word I really take likely, um, considering the fact that, um, money laundering is a national, uh, international, um, subject that most countries are looking into and the fact that Grenada, um, sell passports through the CBI program. And also most recently, uh, the, the Prime Minister of Barbados, Ms. Mia Motley stood before the Congress here in the US trying to make a case for Caribbean nationals being so hard-pressed with all the financial, you know, stuff like that. So my question to you, are you aware of, uh, such, uh, uh, behavior and what are your thoughts and your opinion about, you know, dangling Grenada's name in the words of corruption? Thank you.
Thank you for the comment first, um, and, and yes, we are pleased that we were able to pay back the teachers and that we are, uh, well on the way to oper- operationalizing the repayment of the, the pension. So the question is specifically if I'm aware of, uh, corrupt practices, um, that may have taken place in, in the past? And my answer is yes, I am aware of it. Um, and in a simple term, corruption is using public, in the context of politics, using public funds for your personal aggrandizement or personal aggrandizement of your friends and families, as the case may be. Um, now, whether that would lead to criminal prosecution is a matter for the police and the DPP, um, because ultimately they're the ones who are responsible for instituting and prosecuting, uh, persons who engage in, um, corrupt practices. And I can give you an example, some of you may be aware, um, that the Integrity Commission published its report on the Marketing and National Importing Board. If you haven't seen it, go and read it, it's online. Right? And you would see the sort of practices that should not have happened, which has happened. Um, and there are a number of other examples, eh, eh, where once we have all of the facts, we will present the facts to the public. In a simple and straightforward manner, so the public could make its own assessment as to whether or not this sort of behavior is behavior that we should be accepting, um, or tolerating, or whether or not it's the kind of behavior that we need to, uh, discourage and send the right message that that is not what public service is about. And I wanna say this categorically. All of us, well, certainly the ministers who sit here, no one put a gun to our head and asks us to run for office. When I offered the ministerial portfolios to the ministers, they could have declined it. I didn't put a gun to their heads either.
Well, my friends, you're listening to the broadcast right here at, uh, right here in Brooklyn, New York at the college, and of course, we are broadcasting here with you, with us. Stay with us right here as we lost audio or feed via stage wide. We are hoping that we can hand that back to you right here. We are at Brooklyn College in Brooklyn, New York, right here, with the theme, as we go backstage.
A private lawyer in private practice. So the point is, when you decide to serve the public, serve the public. You will get your reward elsewhere. So we have to lead by example, and I'm saying this because this is part of the challenge that the Caribbean faces, and it's particularly a challenge that I would call black and brown countries face. Public servants should not be using their position at the expense of taxpayers to become rich or to become wealthy of the taxpayers' money. That in a simple, in simple nutshell is corruption. And it's something we need to stand against, it's something we need to advocate about because we are not going to transform our countries and we're not going to move forward if we don't take a stance against corruption. It doesn't mean we can't talk about whether the pay for public service shouldn't be increased, but as a separate, I will certainly tell you, I'm a administrator and I have two ministers here, so I ain't putting my mouth in basket. I am not gonna be defending anybody who chooses to engage in any corrupt activity.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're coming to a time crunch with the college, not necessarily with, uh, the Prime Minister or the ministers, but the time crunch is with the college. So we're asking you to keep the questions very, very short at this point. Thank you. And let's, let's roll as quickly as possible.
Okay, good evening. Um, my name is Shola K. Roberts and I have a background in dance and education and currently serve on the Herberger Institute of Music, Dance and Theatre at Arizona State University. So I'm gonna wrap this up because originally I had three questions, but I'm going to direct my question to the Honorable Minister of Education. So you spoke to the, uh, increasing the arts and performing arts in the school system. So I want to know, um, what plans and if you can speak specifically to the plans that you have as it relates to diversifying the curricula, um, within the secondary education and tertiary level education, um, beyond the CSEC theater arts and music course that is offered to Form Four and Form Five students.
So thank you very much for that question. Indeed, uh, we have intentions to introduce, as I said, we have a few persons, a couple of persons who are trained even at the master's level in that, but currently they're not as well deployed as they should be. So part of the strategy is to, uh, include more persons, get more persons trained. We have a, we've already established contact with some of our persons in the diaspora as well for supporting those areas. So additional persons getting trained and those things being made more widespread, even music too, being introduced or reintroduced into schools in a more deliberate manner. I don't see us going very much further at the moment apart from up to CSEC. Then the challenge would be to give opportunities for further study and to work in conjunction with the creative economy to see how, how we can create that, um, industry, that school that can facilitate, um, the widespread and in fact, probably, um, Orlando might be better able to talk about that, but to have the art school, school of art, that will be able to de- develop the skills in the creative and performing arts outside of the regular and routine school system. So that will be operating in tandem with the school system.
Thank you very much. And we're asking that the back of the line at the moment be the cut-off.
Um, hello, Prime Minister. My name is Jewel Alexis Josie, sorry, Josie, and I'm seven years old and, um, so when I was four years old, told me to make a change in the world and, um, to feed the hungry, clothe the naked, bring baby items and school supplies, um, and I just came back from Grenada and to conduct a Love Wins Grenada. And, um, how can your government, your government help me to, um, be able to, be able to make a change in the lives of children in Grenada?
Good afternoon, Mr. Prime Minister, Ministers of Government. My name is Shali N. Alexis Josie, hail from the tiny village of Walker in St. Andrews. I am the co-founder, along with my founder here, Jewel, of Accelerate and the Rise Foundation Incorporated. And the reason why she's asking you that, cause as she said, we just came from the Grenada, she wanted to make a change there. So we just came from Grenada doing a Love Wins project, but it was hard. The communication was hard. We got there at the airport and while there was some of the immigration officers who would have seen what she would have been doing here in the US. Now Jewel is the youngest Grenadian to ever speak at the White House National Day of Prayer for our nation. Jewel is the youngest to receive a citation and proclamation here in New York City for community service. And so we went there and at the airport, we were treated as if we had a whole lot of drugs and I'm saying, we're just here to make a difference. And with this child being frustrated, we were asking you that maybe interpersonal relationship skills be taught, but the communication for persons that wanting to make a change like her, you know, would be easier. And she said, mommy, I don't like this place. Because it was hard, she wanting to make a change at this age, we were We were asked to come there by persons to encourage children. Her age, she started at four, she started at four, and people were asking, based on what they would have seen on the news, to come and make a change, but it's hard. Even when we came back, I tried reaching out to government officials, it's hard, we're going to get back to you. So we're asking you to please, for young people like these, you know, they're easily discouraged, so asking you to do so.
All right, thank you, and Jewel, you're an inspiration. So to you and I assume it's mom? Yes, well, let me first say I'm very proud of Jewel. It's a pleasure to meet her. And Jewel, I think just by addressing us tonight, I'm sure this has been, and I'm sure there are young Grenadians who are watching and to do more, and to look at you as the perfect kind of example to follow. So I certainly want to say that has to change about our approach to governance and our approach to service is to recognize that we're here to serve. And I'll give an example, because I've already met with, for example, the Immigration Department, and I've had an initial conversation with them to say, listen, there's sun, there's sand, and there's hotels everywhere. But when someone lands at the airport in Grenada, they should have a wow experience. They should say, just because I'm greeted by the Immigration and Customs officials, I'm coming back. And that is where we need to get to, and that is where I want our service providers in Grenada to get to, whether it's our teachers, or nurses, or immigration officers. And so we recognize that service standards is a major issue in Grenada. We have to recognize, again, you came and asked for the job. Your job is to deal with people. And if you have your boat, leave it home, tight on the side of the road, but when you come to work when you come to work, you're here to serve people. And I say this because as a leader of the country, I can assure you there are times when I'm probably not in the best of moods, but I have to leave the not in the best of moods home or when I'm by myself. But when I'm here dealing with persons who I want to ask, they give me the mission to lead the country, I better be ready, silent, and to talk and to speak. And I'm saying that, that message of service, especially when people are volunteering to help, is something that we really have to move on across the nation, and we have to be able to show the next generation that it is actually better to serve than to be served. You know, and that really is the kind of community driven spirit. So I can say, Jewel, you have a limitation to return to Grenada, and myself and the Minister of Education will certainly want the opportunity to meet with you and to allow you to come to Grenada and to inspire children of your age and even older to be like you, to be a service ambassador, to ask, how can I help a fellow human being? So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Prime Minister.
Okay, good evening, Honorable Prime Minister and yours. I, my name is Rita Gabriel, and I'm from the Virgin Parish. I, there was something that really bothers me. My niece went to study in Cuba to become a doctor, and she went back to finish up to be specialized. And she spent the whole pandemic time in Cuba. But when she, she was, she knew she was going back to Grenada for August, so she sent in all her paperwork since in April. She got back to Grenada and she went to the Ministry of Health. We not hiring, don't you hear? It's a new government, and there's a whole bunch of little people inside it, they don't know what they're doing. So I'm telling you that we have, you have to clean house. There is a lot of people out there ready to sabotage, okay? So house need to be cleaned. Next thing is, I'm a nanny, and I took my nineteen-year-old child, who I take care of for years, to Grenada this August. I just came back from Grenada. And I took her to Grenada on vacation. I left her for one day on the beach by herself. She was harassed. She was harassed to the point that she cried and said, why are these people so mean? You know? That broke my heart, but I actually saw it in person. I saw there were two tourist people, white people, on a grandmas bus was humiliated. And then I took her to town, I wanted her to see St. George's, and there were vendors on the side of, not the market, but Annel's, and the supermarket. I wanted her to taste skinup, she never had one in her life, okay? So I asked the young man if I can have to skinup so she can taste it so she likes it before I buy it. She didn't like it. He took his hand and put around her neck, you want to try a piece of me, you want to taste a little piece of me? I slapped his hand off, I had a really, really bad time. My thing is that we as Grenadians, I know we can be the rudest people in the world, but we have to respect the tourists or the people who visit our island. You don't want them to leave in, and I know you're not the Minister of Tourism, but I would really like you to bring up these things to him for me, please. Thank you very much, and may God bless you all.
All right, thank you. Well, on the question of the, the experience, well, it makes no sense to send your citizens away to study, and when you come back, you tell them you're not hiring them. Then you might as well have left them in the, in the, in the country. So I can certainly assure you that we need more, not less, doctors. And although I don't know her name, I'm certainly sure that once she speaks to the right persons, that the matter would be addressed. On the question of, it goes back again to the question of our service standards and how we behave or not behave. And it's, it's not just within the public service, but it's also within the private service. What do you treat with your customers? At what point in time do you want to buy something from you and not invading people's personal space? And those are issues that we have to teach our children, teach our adults in many instances, and talk about what it is to be polite and what it is to be polite. Because although we talk to ourselves as the most friendly people on earth, we are not always polite. And those are some of the things that we need to, we need to be able to, we are not always polite, and oftentimes, sometimes we are not odd as well, and we're impatient. So those are some of the issues that we, we have to address as a nation to make sure we remain civil, become more civil, and become more polite in terms of, not even before we get to the tourists, or we deal with each other first, before we then extend the cortisone to, to tourists.
Good evening. Just briefly to what she just said, yes, we have to keep protecting and respecting women on the island, not just tourists and men, but women are getting harassed. That's just from her point. I am a student here and an employee here at Brooklyn College, obviously Grenadian. Everyone knows, why would I be here? Everyone knows that Grenada makes some of the best spices, and all you have to do is just taste it to tell that we have some of the better quality around the world. But unfortunately, we haven't had any of that on American soil. I know we're working to get ourselves self-sufficient to feeding the island, and I really admire that aspect of the government right now. To what everybody said about agriculture, I'm really happy to have heard it. One day, I would really like to have seen our products here on American soil, in American kitchens. That would feed the Grenadian economy in a lot of that we, as a, as a crowd here, may not be able to write you a check for all these dollars that I know the government needs. But if we can all go to the supermarket and buy a spice every now and then, or buy something that we know we like from home, we should be able to do that, but it's not here in our supermarket. So I would really like for you all to one day see it, to make things available to us. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the comments. And so, and I think this is what Minister Annel talked about. The government can only do so much. We can, for instance, help our farmers, our tradespeople, our business people to address questions like the regulation, the standards, et cetera, that you need to meet in order to be able to export food or food products to North America. But the government itself can't grow the spices. It can't grow spices, right? And the processing and the packaging, that is where the private sector needs to come in. That is where the opportunities for the business needs to come in. That is where people in the diaspora need to be able to say, I am prepared to come back and invest in the cinnamon industry in Grenada, in the clove industry in Grenada, in the nutmeg and the cocoa industry in Grenada, so that we can get our products to the market on the eastern seaboard. Right? And that is the kind of partnership and the kind of connection we need between persons who are home and persons in the diaspora. There's nothing stopping you in the diaspora from coming home and entering into business partnership with persons who are home, who are producing the spices, to say, you produce, I will buy from you, and I will get it to the North American market. And that is really what we need to happen. The government's job in those circumstances is to encourage you, give you the concessions, help you to meet whatever packaging or labeling or food standards that is required for the U.S. market, do whatever lobbying we have to do with the U.S. government to make sure that our food is given a fair shot at entering the market. And if in some cases it means help with transportation in terms of air freight or sea freight, fine. But the private sector has to step up if we are going to truly make use of the opportunities that are available in Grenada to get our food in particular, and our spices in particular, outside of Grenada. When bananas were exported, it wasn't being exported by the government, you know? It's all private people. They came together as the Grenada Cooperative Banana Association. The nutmegs that have been, it is not exported by the government. It is all private farmers who have an entity that is exporting it, right? The chocolates that are being made in Grenada, it's not being made by the government. It is made by private investors who've invested in chocolate plants and are buying cocoa with a view to exporting. We have to encourage them, we have to support them, but we need the private sector to step up and to invest in industries because the opportunities are there, whether it's CMOS, whether it's Lamby, you know, we can go on and on. There are actual opportunities that are available, but we need the private sector to invest in those areas.
Sisters and brothers, time is really of the essence. We have only a few minutes more left. To ensure that we can take questions from all of you, limit your questions to thirty seconds, okay? And secondly, secondly, we cannot accommodate anyone else joining the line at this point. So if you're in the line, you may ask your question, limited to thirty seconds, please.
Good night, standing on protocol already established. My former teacher, Ms. Annel, my dear Prime Minister, I love you. My educational minister, I was in education, so you are still my minister. I have a question for you. What plans do you have in re-establishing home economics and woodwork in the primary school? I have been a teacher for twenty-nine years at the Granville Government School, and Sir Bright, Minister of Education, took out home economics and woodwork. He said he did not think his nine-year-old needed to know how to make a cake or whatever. The materials that we had at Granville Government School ended up in St. John's Christian Secondary School. The lits, all the instrument, all the woodwork material went to St. John's Christian Secondary School. So I can attest to what really happened in the primary schools. There is no woodwork or home economics there.
Right. So thank you very much for that question. What I can say to you, the reality is, there are centers that still serve some primary schools, but I know not enough attention was paid to some of the other centers, and we are going to be quite deliberate about ensuring that all of our upper-grade students get exposure, at least to some degree of those skills, so that when they get into secondary schools, it's easier for them to find a track and end up becoming more proficient in skill. So that's coming, it's going to be strengthened. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Prime Minister and your panel and everyone in here. There's several issues that are very important to me as a Grenadian. As a Grenadian, I just mentioned them quickly. Community centers, someone already mentioned libraries. I am from the town of Granville, and it's sort of discouraging to me going to Granville. The buildings are dilapidated, they need refurbishing. There are too many vendors on the sidewalk, and there are too many of our youth just walk on the street with nowhere to go. I think we need those community centers, or no cinema or anything, something that would attract these young individuals. Also, I am, okay, my question, my question is, what, what services do you have for the disabled in Grenada as it relates to the stairs or, you know, access to main areas?
Right, so let me start at the end. What services we have for persons who are differently-able?
Disabled.
Right. So I know within the education sector, we do have a special education desk or department, and we have, in recent times, trained a number of other teachers even to the bachelor's degree level to, in special needs, and...
I'm mostly referring to accessibility, like the stairs and, you know, renting services.
Right. Well, in, in, in most new builds, the accessibility, the ramps and all of those are being placed. And in cases where they have not been there, some are being retrofitted to ensure that there can be that access. But admittedly, not all of them have that, so there is some work to be done there, and we are going to have that done.
Sidewalk as well.
Yes, we have services available to them. We have itinerant teachers that serve them in some of the schools, and we're looking to strengthen that as well. Right, so I think the issue of community centers that were raised, I think very recently we, the Cabinet passed a conclusion to have all of the, the community centers returned to being managed by the Ministry of Social Development. In fact, the context of that is that the former administration had passed a cabinet conclusion that allowed for particular organizations to manage and run the affairs of some community centers, and that debarred community residents from having access to some of those community centers. And so we had to sit as a cabinet and rescind that previous cabinet decision. And so that is happening, and all of the, the community centers will be run by community groups under the Ministry of Social Development and Community.
Thank you very much, Minister.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The first one, first issue I want to raise, the first issue is related to developers and their getting access to building properties in Grenada, not, not, especially hoteliers who want to build hotels in Grenada. And then the government has a policy that says that if you want to build a hotel in Grenada, one of, one of the agreements, part of the agreement should be training the management, the upper management of these hotels to scale in their, their input in hotels. For instance, the first year, ten percent of hotels should be local management, by the fifth year, it should be fifty percent of the management should be Grenadian, by the tenth year, it should be a hundred percent of Grenadians should be management. Because what Grenadians are getting from these hotels basically is a menial jobs, making up the bed and the gardening. Secondly, in terms of housing in Grenada, I think the government have a policy that says that if you're going to build a house more than five hundred thousand dollars worth, that part of that should be, solar panels should be a part of that, should be a part of that. And the next issue I want to address is land in Grenada and foreigners buying land in Grenada, which is basically eliminating locals in Grenada from buying this land, because the land prices were not so high that locals cannot buy these lands.
All right, thank you. I agree on completely on one, two. On three, it's a little more tricky, because you need to have regulations in place when it comes to land policy, and we certainly could have a policy as to where non-Grenadians can buy and not buy land. But if you're also encouraging investment, and unfortunately, the past policy has been to a large extent in hotel development, the truth is hotels tend to be located in certain areas, oftentimes the coast, because people want to have access to the beach. So it's something that has to be taught out or taught through to make sure you don't, on one hand... to make sure you don't, on one hand, discourage investment while at the same time trying to make sure that land prices remain affordable for, for Grenadians. Now, the problem is that it's currently, there's just no regulation in place. So it's a bit of a Wild, Wild West in the sense that there's no regulations, there's no areas that are reserved for Grenadians only and so on. And so a land use policy is part of what the Ministry of Agriculture and Lands has to address. But I certainly agree that from a, that we have control over the concession packages that are given to hotels. And you can certainly say to them, if you want the concessions, that from a human resource development point of view, that by year X, a certain percentage of the management in particular must be Grenadians. And ensure that the training and so on is put in place and that our education system puts Grenadians in a position where they in fact could be the managers of the hotels and so on. So I completely agree with you on, on that issue. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I have two concerns. Do we have a food policy in Grenada? Do we have a food policy? Food policy?
Well, in, in, in simple terms, the answer would be, we don't have a food policy as something that is legislated. But I can tell you, our government's perspective is that we want Grenadians to eat as much of the food that we consume.
Yeah, but we, we should have a food policy.
Yeah.
The second concern, the second concern I have is GrenLEC.
Yes.
In providing solar energy. We have an abundance of sunlight in Grenada.
Right.
It's very expensive.
Right. But I can certainly tell you that our approach is that we would like as much renewable energy to be on the grid as possible. And so now that we are in, in government, one of the things we intend to do is to get rid of many of the obstacles and roadblocks that are in the way of, first of all, ordinary Grenadians being themselves able to power their own homes with renewable energy. And we certainly would be encouraging GrenLEC as well to invest heavily in renewable energy. But I also don't want to be naive. The kind of renewable energy, particularly solar energy, is temperamental. If the clouds come over, the output drops. If you've got rain, the output drops. So when it comes to particularly heavy use energy, renewables alone will not be able to power Grenada. That's the reality. And then the second aspect of it is that we have to be able to maintain the grid. And somebody has to pay for that. And that means all of us have to be able to share in that cost. Or then you'll end up in a situation where big companies, for example, could come off the grid and, and then the small man, the average person may not be able to do so and then may find himself paying more and more for electricity. So yes, we have to transition into renewables. But at this point in time, we don't have the capacity where the, where the majority of the energy supply can come from renewables.
To the right.
Pleasant good evening to the Honorable PM. I'm very delighted to see you sitting here. We're happy to have you, to your members of cabinets. My question is regards to the senior citizens of Grenada. I would like to know what policies and programs would you implement in, to provide services for them, not limited to health services, recreational services as well? And also on that same token, do we have those who are living with chronic illnesses, maybe 80, 85 plus? What services can you award them to provide adequate services for like a pain relief?
Sorry, I, I just want to make sure you're speaking specifically of senior citizens.
Yeah, primarily.
All right, thank you. Well, the Ministry of Social and Community Development is the ministry that is tasked primarily with dealing with our senior citizens. They in fact look after a number of homes for senior citizens. One of the things that we are planning to do is implement a wholesale policy that allows us to do some of the things you talk about. From ensuring that there are recreation parks. It's one of the things we talked a lot about. There are no actual recreation parks outside of playing fields in Grenada. So when it comes for making sure that senior citizens can exercise outside of the beach or just a pasture, that's all that's there. So one of the things we intend to do is to invest particularly in parks that have community centers that allows for actual recreational facilities to be provided so our senior citizens can use. And as the Minister of Education stated, we have taken the policy decision that all community centers belong to the community and that people should have access to it, including senior citizens, so that senior citizens can have facilities that allow them, for example, to socialize, to interact with each other, to pass on their knowledge and experience to a younger generation as well as to help. Because one of the things we want to do is to make sure our senior citizens are computer literate. You see, we have to teach them to be computer literate because the reality is, that is the direction the world is moving in and there is no stopping it. And so we can't leave them behind and put them at a disadvantage where they don't have the confidence because we have not taught them to become computer literate. And it's an excellent opportunity for the young generation to teach the older generation and for the older generation to teach the younger generation when we talk about some of the things Orlando spoke about, our culture, our history, their experience, their knowledge, their skill sets, so that we can pass those on. So we are working on putting those policies in place. The starting point was to make sure that all our community centers are available for the communities. We'll also be working on upgrading and refurbishing them because many of them have been abandoned and not upgraded. And then we're also looking at trying to establish community parks throughout Grenada. Most of the, some of the recreational facilities have been lit at night as well so that persons can also come out in the evenings and come out at night, not necessarily in the day when the sun is, is, is too hot. So that's part of what we're looking at. And then finally, going back to the question of volunteer services. A lot of Grenadians on their own volunteer to, you know, do social activities with senior citizens. Pick them up, take them to the beach, you know, take them for bus tours around the island and so on. But the government itself has never had a formal policy in place to address those things. And those are some of the issues that I think from a social community point of view, we would be working with. Even simple things like getting vouchers to senior citizens so that they can get discounted food at supermarkets and so on. Those are some of the initiatives that we would look to be piloting to make sure that our senior citizens are treated the way they deserve.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, folks, a quick housekeeping announcement. As you know, as we all know, democracy has its costs. And there's a cost for being here too. And be asking for your help. We're going to be passing the hat around a little bit. We have a basket, so just be on the lookout for the next few minutes. During the next few minutes, someone might be coming your way. Please be generous. And we also have cards at the end of this session. Folks will be asking you, if you have a question that you did not get answered today, you can write it on the card and give your contact information. And someone will get back to you with a response in the future. Thank you. Next question, please.
Yes, hello, good evening, Prime Minister Mitchell and your team. My question is regards to the Department of Transportation in terms of the roads, infrastructure, in terms of the secondary and the primary roads. What is the government's plans in terms of ensuring that we have proper roads, in terms of connectivity? You mentioned about the supply chain when it comes to, you know, delivery of food supply and things of that nature. Helping with the, you know, the, the health services for the ambulance for the needy. What is the government plans in place to address those needs? Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the question. We actually have to assess in a wholesale manner the state of the roads. And I will start with our bridges. We still have a lot of bridges in Grenada where only one vehicle can pass at any given time. And so from a transformation point of view, we need to get our main roads, all of them, at all points in time where two vehicles can pass without one having to stop for the other one to come through. So the assessment of the state of our bridges is part of what we, we are going to address first. And then the second issue is both the eastern main road, the western main road and the southeastern main road in Grenada actually needs a complete overhaul. And so it will require significant investment, but we need to straighten our roads. The winding and the bending and so on is counterproductive, it's tiring, it's dangerous. And so we have to actually take bold steps to create straighter roads that allows us to get to St. Patrick in significantly less time than we currently do. And so when it comes to places like Granatang and so on, we're going to have to burrow through some of these mountains to straighten the road. When it comes to the west coast, we are going to probably have to build some bridges that goes through rivers and the beach in order to give us straighter roads. That's the reality. It will require significant investment, but that is part of the transformation that we need. If we can't transform the roads to take the traffic that is required, we will not be in a position to really be able to transform Grenada. So that is part of what we are, we are looking at. Some of these things, even if we started in, in, in our term, will require more long-term planning. But we know that is something that must be done and that is part of, of our, our plans for doing so. So thank you.
Good evening, my name is Hazel Gampart. And good evening to the honorable members of the days. My question is, my concern is mental health. Recently, we've seen an increase in the number of suicides on the island, young children. We also have seen the increase of pedophilia on the island. And my concern is, is there anything that you have planned, the Ministry of Education, to really help some of these students in school? Because mental illness, there's a stigma that goes along with mental illness in Grenada. And we would like to remove that stigma so that people who need help and special children, they can come forward. Also, the children who have been victims of pedophiles, we, are there any services that's offered to them? Because I think as a sexual abuse counselor, they would need severe counseling so that they can function on a normal level. So my question is, how do we deal with the mental health on the island?
Right. Thank you very much for that question. Indeed, from an education perspective, we have a student support services unit. And that unit entails having counselors that are assigned to all of the schools. But let me say, not all of the schools because within the last administration's tenure, they've allowed a number of schools to go without being filled with, with a counselor. And in some cases, we have one counselor serving a cluster of six or seven schools. Obviously, that's not going to cut it because at a primary level, where we should have earlier intervention to begin to deal with the, the introduction of any inappropriate and maladroit behaviors, we let them go on because the counselor can only see them once every other week or once a week. And then when they get to secondary school, that's where we have resident counselors in most cases and in some cases we don't have. But rest assured, strengthening the student support services division is one of the key priorities for us. In fact, we've already, I've already instructed that we fill the positions afforded for in the estimates of revenue and expenditure to have counselors replaced in all of the vacant slots to ensure that we give all of the services available to students in schools. That was heightened in the period of COVID-19 when we saw increases in anxiety, increases in panic attacks and all of those that follow out of COVID. And of course, increase in suicide, suicidiation as well. On a wider sense, there are organizations that treat with persons who are, who are victims of pedophilia. There's the Child Protection Authority, there is Coalition on the Rights of the Child. So there are some of these agencies that work together to ensure that help is brought to those persons thus affected. Yeah? But we are going to strengthen our offerings for the mental health. We are concerned about that across the nation too.
Thank you.
We're asking that kindly, that this be the final question because the Prime Minister has to rush off. He has, unfortunately, he has another engagement, so...
Okay, good night. I think the minister, Honorable Minister, answered part of my questions. So I'll just be...
Down.
I'll just be brief. We spoke about, we've seen a lot of cases of child molestation, domestic violence, rape, abuse and stuff like that. So what I would like to find out, in those cases, we find the perpetrator, the law, that they practically walk away and the victims are left to suffer. We see a lot of those on ride-along, on the social platforms. And enough is not being done. And the, the police force, is there like a special, like crime victim to assist the victims, especially the rape ones? And what plans the government have in place? Because I think, Mr. PM, you need to clean up the police force. Don't, it's not a force anymore, from the top to the bottom. It's, you need to be cleaned up. We need to have a complete system to help. It shouldn't be a police force. It should be a system to assist the citizens of Grenada, Karakul and Piti Matic. That's all I have to say.
All right, so on the question of, as a citizen, I certainly know that there's been a general concern about whether the punishment, so to speak, and the sentences for sexually related crimes are adequate. And that requires legislative change and requires a policy change that says as a country, we are going to severely punish persons who engage in that sort of behavior. So oftentimes, the sentences are passed and they light because the current law and our books do not impose stiff enough sentences. And so it requires us to have the kind of consultation and the policy changes that are required so that then the legislation itself can be adjusted so that if we wish for stiffer sentences for those kinds of crimes, that in fact, it happens. But I'm also going to speak about something that I don't think we speak about. The people doing these things oftentimes need it long before it is discovered. Oftentimes, it's an open secret. And we in our communities either turn a blind eye to it, hide or pretend that we don't know it's happening. And then when one or two of them finally happen and it makes the media attention, there's a big outcry, a big hula babu, and then we go right back to business as usual. So the reality is, most of the perpetrators are members of people's family or close relatives or people that people know. And so the onus is on all of us to send the message and to educate our people, particularly our children, to know that these kinds of behaviors are reprehensible and they should not tolerate them and they should not be afraid to speak up and to complain and that our children should be defended and protected when these things are happening. From an education point of view, we come to advocate for higher standards of behavior, particularly for our men. We need to make sure that we do not turn a blind eye, complain or talk about the things that are happening to them. And then the third aspect, some of these things happen because of poverty. Where people either turn a blind eye because somebody is giving them... paying them off. And those... It's because that fuels and continues to fuel some of these kinds of behavior. We certainly need to have the open conversations, not the emotional ones. Not where we just have outrage and then two months later, we go back to business as usual. Where we have the kind of conversations that will lead to the education. Because oftentimes, people who are abusing people, they themselves were abused. And it's learned behavior and they are just simply passing it on. So those are some of the issues that we need to address as a nation, within our communities, within our school system, within our villages. And so I certainly want to join and encourage you to continue doing so because you have influence on your relatives, your family and your friends back home so that we can have these discussions to make sure that we can eliminate and reduce and minimize the risk of these kinds of behaviors taking place in, in Grenada. Because if you look at the crime statistics, sexually related offenses dominate. They dominate the list. Housebreaking and stealing and so on is minor compared to rape, incest, indecent assault and those kinds of things. And so it is an area that we as a nation need to spend some significant time working on. So thank you for the comments and the questions.
Again, guys, we'd like to say thank you for watching this Tongue Hall meeting here live from New York, Brooklyn College. We have a rush that we just made aware of that all of our production team has to clear this vicinity within the space of 10 or so minutes. There's a raffle going on, on stage right now. We're going to get some audio, but right after that, we'll have to end the broadcast. Stay tuned for this last part of the program.
Let's see what I can find in there. Lots of goodies. Cocoa bugs, cinnamon, nutmegs, a little bit of everything. The lucky number, 796150. It's a red ticket. Is somebody holding?
Okay, again, again, guys, let's just take this opportunity to thank everyone for watching this live broadcast Tong Hall meeting from New York. We were given a quick, quick, quick mandate, guys, to get out, get our equipment packed up and be out of the building, because they did go a little bit over time, which is, you know, of course, is going to put a strain on us, because you do have a substantial amount of equipment to wrap up, fold up, and get out. So sorry again for the, what may seem as an abrupt end to the event tonight. Okay, let's take the vote of thanks, and then we're going to wrap up right after the vote of thanks.
Thank you for looking on and getting the information. We thank you all here in the Totee that has chosen to come out and listen to what the delegation had to say, led by Prime Minister Deacon Mitchell. And to ask your questions, we thank you for your ongoing support. We thank the media companies, both online and present, for coming out. Have a good night, everybody.
Okay, guys, so this is where we wrap up this, this evening proceedings. Again, we apologize, which we, what may seem to be a very abrupt end, end to the program here today, but it was necessary that we get our stuff and wrap up and get out of the building. We was given actually 10 minutes to, to get a, a wrap on things. So thanks for sharing, thanks for being a part of our program, guys. We appreciate you. Don't forget to join us tomorrow for Ride Along Live, where everyone has a story to tell.
Welcome to Ride Along, where it's happening, happening here.
I'm over here! What does it mean?
You know, I, I grew up in what I guess the part of the South Island.
We bring all the stories, and that's just of the facts. And that's why everyone has a story to tell.
Ride Along Live, I mean, yeah, it's the real deal.